Okay, welcome to the regular planning commission meeting of Tuesday, May 4. We will have a pledge of allegiance and rest, Jason Anderson to lead us on that if you could lead us up. Great. And if everybody can mute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Always feel like the American Gothic.
Thank you, Jason. I'm on my, I'm at my standing desk, so I'm gonna let it go down, down there. Okay, um, can we have a roll call, please, Nick?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Carranza.
I am here.
Commissioner Hughes.
Present.
Commissioner McIntyre. Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Keen. Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yeah.
So we have six present, thank you.
Thank you, and we're hopeful that our team will join us shortly. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, Dennis. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Randy. Annette.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Keen just calling in case she's joined. No, and Chairperson Van den Eyck.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll enter a public comment now, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wanting to address the commission on any matter on that is not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdictions. Speakers are limited to three minutes, please state your name for the record before making your presentation. The commission may take action and direct staff to place the matter of business on a future agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment? And if you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, if you could do star nine, and this is for anything that's not on the agenda.
Not seeing anyone.
Nobody. Then we will move on to the consent counter. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff and will be approved by one motion if no member of the commissioner public wishes to comment or ask questions. Looks like the only thing on there is our draft minutes, does, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the draft for the consent calendar?
I'll make the motion.
And Victoria, second, thank you. You're muted.
Oh, I think you had a note that you wanted to mention on the draft minutes, am I correct, Phil?
Oh, Phil, do you have something you need to add?
Thank you for reminding me, I knew, and I told you to remind me, and you did, because I told you I'd forget, and I did, so, thank you so much about that. There is a correction that staff would like to suggest on the minutes, and it has to do with the failed motion on both of the items last time because of the three two votes, and trying to get to that page here.
It's page three.
Thank you, Annette. I made a note for myself here, so under, on page three, in the middle of the page on the motion, we would like to add a note that motion failed due to a lack of a general majority vote of the entire commission based on the conclusion of our city attorney that we needed at least four members of the commission to vote on a action for a resolution. That may not be the exact wording we need to put into that particular item, but we need to note in that motion, just like we did in the other one here, that even though the motion passed by a three two by roll call vote, that the motion actually failed for lack of required number of votes, I think that same note is on page five, at the bottom of page five, we can just copy that note and put that over.
Exactly.
That's staff's recommendation on that, if the planning commission can oblige.
Great, then, let's see, who made that motion? Is it Jason?
Yeah, Jason did, do you wanna go ahead and add that, Jason?
Yeah, do you accept that modified?
I'll resend my motion because I was meeting for the minute, so.
I'll go ahead and do it then.
Okay.
Yeah, to approve the draft minutes with the motion failed due to lack of required number of votes in accordance to attorney Pyrex determination based on G C three six nine three six, that verbiage that I just said on page five, get put on page three as well for the the, the item that we've tried to vote on.
Can I get a second on that?
One second.
Okay, thanks, Randy.
Okay, you can all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Um, is, is Vice Chairperson Keen available, yes or no? No? Chairperson Van den Eyck?
Yes.
So motion passes six zero, thank you.
I don't believe there's any planning commission business, and there are no community development staff reports, so we're going to move into the public hearing. For each of the following items, the public will be given the opportunity to speak after a staff report, the chair will open the public hearing and invite the applicant or applicants representative to make any comments, members of the public will be invited to provide testimony to the commission following the applicant, speakers should state their name for the record and can address the commission for three minutes. After all the comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed, and the commission will discuss the item and take appropriate actions. We'll start out with the disclosure of ex parte, and start with Jennifer. Do you have any expertise?
I do not, I've had no expertise.
This, this is for specifically for item number two, so.
I have not.
Jason?
I have a few ex parte. One, I spoke with Scott Newton on April eighteenth at a brief phone meeting with about some changes made in an attempt to secure the CUP. Spoke with Rob Fell, person of interest, on April nineteenth, he basically restated what he said in public comments and on written occasions. I watched the previous meetings that I wasn't present at, and I received an email from Scott Newton stating his efforts to secure the CUP and it forwarded that to Annette, Annette, did you get that? Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
I also received a phone call from Mr. Newton discussing the project as he did with Jason, and then also the numerous numbers of email that were sent to us in our, in our email accounts, I had reviewed each of those.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
I have no additional ex parte, Scott Newton did try to give me a text message and emailed me, unfortunately, due to that we moved the discussion to this, I did not know if it was still considered an open topic, so I did not want to open that form of communication without giving everyone the same ability to be able to communicate, so no additional ex parte.
Thank you, Victoria.
Yeah, I have talked with the agent for Scott, Francis, as of Friday, I think that's April thirtieth, and then also I had a follow-up question for her today that I called her back on, and then I also spoke with a gentleman named Clyde Snyder, who's a person of interest opposing the project, and I talked with him today. He had emailed me April twenty-second, which I got back to him today on, as far as my reasoning for the last vote, and wanted to talk about the project further, so.
Okay, thank you. I did receive probably a similar email from Mr. Newton, I did not respond to that, and I did have a phone message left by Francis Romero, but I did not have time to respond to that, so. Okay, that's where we are, so we will go ahead and start with.
I can go ahead and add that I got that same email, I'm pretty sure it was a copy and paste email to all of us, but addressed to us like individually from Scott. Yeah, so I just acknowledged it, I didn't say anything more.
As did I, yeah.
Okay. All right, then we will give the board staff for their presentation.
All right, good evening commissioners, so this item was continued from the previous meeting, as was alluded to in the minutes discussion, there we were not able to reach a full majority vote on the project, and so it was continued to this meeting for additional discussion and deliberation. A little bit on the project background, there was a similar project reviewed and denied on appeal on this parcel back in two thousand nineteen. The DRC reviewed the new project in terms of architecture and land use. They did conclude that the architecture and site design changes that were made from that original project did increase the aesthetics of the project, but they did not reach consensus on land use compatibility and left that up to the planning commission to deliberate and decide. The item, as I stated, was reviewed on April twentieth and was continued due to a lack of majority motion. This is the location of the proposed mini storage project, it is in the public zoning district adjacent to the Dove Creek neighborhood, the La Paloma Court neighborhood, and down the street from Paloma Park, as well as the Renew apartment apartments. It's bordered by both El Camino Real and Viejo Camino, it is currently two separate parcels. So in summary, the project is approximately sixty-one thousand square feet of mini storage facility that includes self-storage units and an office for the facility, there's also a community room proposed, a workshop, a parking area, and it's in five total buildings. So the mini storage does require a conditional use permit in the public zone, which means certain findings have to be met in order to approve the project. Some of those findings are neighborhood compatibility and consistency with the general plan and community vision. So the CUP is the process used to review proposals that are at a magnitude or the nature which could significantly affect their surroundings, and therefore they need a little bit additional scrutiny, that's either through adding conditions to make them compatible, or determining that they might not be compatible based on the nature of the use. So a little bit of background about the public zoning district, the designation applies to parcels that are publicly zoned and is intended to house publicly operated facilities or facilities that meet a public service or public purpose. The Tascadero State Hospital is an example of some of our public zoned property, as well as most of our local schools. It does also include educational religious facilities and daycare facilities in that definition. This is a little bit of a summary of what kind of uses are allowed and conditionally allowed in the public zoning district, so you can see things like parks and playgrounds are allowed, outdoor recreation schools, public assembly and entertainment, utility facilities, collection stations, sounds a little bit scary, but really what that is, is just the type that you see in the supermarket parking lot that only allows for two hundred square feet of covered storage for drop-off locations, and then those materials are moved off-site. In terms of conditionally allowed uses, membership organizations, childcare centers, residential care facilities, things might have, that might have an additional impact on a neighborhood, and mini storage is one of those listed uses. In terms of the building design, it's an agrarian rural theme, they have barn-like accents, darker tones for the building faces and metal ribbing on the interior storage buildings. There is a two-story component kind of on top of the knoll where the existing geodesic dome sits, and then it moves to one-story buildings lower into the site. These are some of the elevations, the flat elevations that you would see from the mini storage facility. So the north property elevation faces the existing vacant commercial property that is adjacent to this one, and the south property line elevation here is the elevation if you were driving north on El Camino that you would see, although it's not in three D, so it's a little hard to see from this vantage point. These are some of the materials proposed for the building, as you can see a lot of metal, some storefront window systems, they are proposing a security fence, which is kind of a wrought iron style, and the rock block proposed for the retaining walls is kind of this stamped eco-natural looking block material. So this is the site design of the facility, you can see the entrance off of Viejo Camino, an ample vehicular circulation throughout the site to get to the buildings, and the parking lot located adjacent to building A. There is an existing ephemeral creek that runs through the property, that's a fork of Paloma Creek that enters at El Camino Real from the restored wetlands across the street at the Dove Creek Project, and enters a culvert under Viejo Camino and joins the creek that runs through the park and adjacent to the Paloma Court neighborhood. This is a little bit hard to read, but it's an overlay of the previous project with the newly proposed project. So in this area here, you can see that there was additional mini storage facility proposed in this location, and so this newly proposed project does have a more natural curve to the creek in this location, and they have reduced the project scope in this location. This is a preliminary landscape plan concept, they are proposing to naturalize the realigned creek with some vegetated sloping banks, and also provide street trees and vegetation along Viejo Camino and El Camino Real and screening landscaping as well. On Viejo Camino, there was a condition included to ensure adequate landscape screening outside the right-of-way. The original plans show the street trees planted in the right-of-way. We do have conditions that require full build-out of Viejo Camino to city standard, which would necessitate using that right-of-way for some on-street parking. So the applicant, the condition as we stated it in the resolution was to move building E back to allow for additional landscaping. The applicant is requesting an option to remove the fencing and align the fencing with building E face to allow for that additional landscaping without the fencing inhibiting the ability to plant the street trees there. So the applicant will speak more about that in their presentation, but that is a request that they're making tonight and would need to be a change to the conditions in the resolution. Signage is allowed by the municipal code to face public streets. One of our public street where the entrance is, is in a residential neighborhood, so there are conditions included that require non-illuminated signage in order to reduce impacts to the neighboring residential properties. In terms of traffic, the mini storage is expected to generate about seventy-seven trips per day. That's approximately the equivalent of seven single-family residential units based on the I T manual. And the community meeting room is anticipated to generate approximately sixty-eight trips a day when it's in, when it's in use. And, and that's sort of based on just an average meeting room space from the I T manual. I did wanna note that the applicant is willing to remove the community room space and convert it to additional storage units if the planning commission feels that that would increase neighborhood compatibility. And that also would need some condition changes in the language of the resolution. In terms of frontage improvements, our city engineer is requiring improvements to both El Camino Real and Viejo Camino, which include bike lanes, curb gutters, sidewalk, striping on Viejo Camino to allow for turn pockets and safe movements into and out of the facility. Parking lane on Viejo Camino, which is part of our standard street section for the collector's street, and then restricted access off of El Camino Real to be recorded, to limit any conflicting movements on El Camino. We're currently not calling for any widening or any additional improvements in El Camino, so that restricted access is key until a point in time when something changes with the design of El Camino Real. So the current development plan does propose to realign that ephemeral drainage that runs through the site. Of particular note, our general plan requires a twenty-foot setback to prevent flood damage and protect riparian habitats of naturalized creek areas unless a finding can be made that the creek and the riparian habitat and development will not be negatively impacted. So because of the creek realignment and some encroachment of the buildings to the realigned renaturalized area, this finding does need to be made in order to approve the project. The current design does include vegetated slopes on both sides of the reconstructed channel and a naturalized creek bottom. If you've been out to the project site, you know that currently the ephemeral drainage has had grading grazing impacts as well as some disking of the property, and so the applicant's design does improve the existing conditions of the creek. Generally, our twenty-foot setback is measured from the top of bank, the applicant's providing approximately a twenty-foot setback from the center line of the creek to the new proposed building and the betrayal that they're proposing on one side. So you would need to make specific findings, not only for realignment of the creek, but for the current design in having that reduced setback. This is an example of the creek channel design as it comes next to the mini storage facility pad. So you can see there's a retaining wall that the facility pad is on, some vegetated slopes and naturalized bottom, and then a larger vegetated slope going up to the sewer easement, which is also proposed to have the pedestrian trail. Just for a little bit of context, these are the flood zones and creeks that flow near and through the property, so this is the property location here, and you can see this channel coming here through the property, and then this is Paloma Creek here coming through and meeting up with the creek past the, past the park facilities. This is a slightly closer view of the property with the flood zones on it, so the area in purple outlined in red is the floodway. Any modifications to that area will require FEMA approval to remap the floodway and flood zones on their insurance mapping. So that is conditioned as part of the project, and then you can see the slight, the medium blue is the hundred-year flood plain, and then there's additional flooding beyond that to a lesser degree that exists today. So as I mentioned, FEMA approval is required to modify the flood zone mapping with work done in the floodway. The applicants will have to provide a hydrology analysis and approval that it, that basically shows no impacts to downstream properties. This is something the city looks for as well as FEMA, the post-development flow through the site has to be equal to or less than the pre-development flows in order to not impact any adjacent properties, and then the flood plain can't grow in area onto adjacent properties, it can only be relocated on the applicant's property unless approval is received from that neighboring property. So when we make our findings for approval or denial, we look at general plan consistency. There are a number of general plan policies that were listed in the original staff report, that I'm sure you've all had time to look through. A couple of those that have come up in previous conversations on this project are the city's civic gateways, economic development and promoting a variety of uses, transforming El Camino Real into an attractive commercial and industrial area with long-term economic viability for the community, retention, retention and expansion of existing businesses and attracting new development, and then we have our creek and riparian general plan policies that look to maintain the naturalized areas throughout the city. So these are the findings that are required for approval of conditional use permit, as well as the creek setback exception. In order to approve a project, all of the findings have to be made in the affirmative. The findings that are specifically called out as appropriate for discussion for the project is consistency with the general plan, consistency with the neighborhood character, in compliance with city policies, and then the creek finding as well. It's important to note that when this went to appeal, the city council, council did make a specific finding for denial of the project. They did find that the proposed mini storage project is surrounded primarily by residential parkland, childcare facilities, churches, and a seasonal creek, and that a mini storage project in use is incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and is a departure from the established land use pattern. It's also contrary to the orderly development of the immediate neighborhood. So in terms of conditions of approval, there's been a couple of amendments since the project was last before you on April twentieth. We did add a couple of conditions from the last meeting that seemed to make sense, and the applicant was in agreement with. Those included hours of operation, the meeting room use restrictions, the sewer easement improvements clarification, some conditions for lighting, ensuring low levels during the evening hours, and the landscape setback at Viejo Camino. We also at the last meeting discussed adding an open space condition to the portion of the parcel that is currently shown as being unused. That was, that condition was part of the failed motion that did garner the three-two vote. But that condition was not included in the attached resolution, we felt like that maybe needed more discussion from the commission with the full commission present, but certainly could be added to any motion of approval at the desire of the commission. We're also recommending one condition be changed based on a conversation with the applicant. They did not specifically mention meeting room hours in their slide, however, they assumed that that would be the same as the storage office rather than the entire storage facility. So they would like to amend that condition, should the resolution pass, to be eight to five instead of six to nine. So the planning commission has three options with this project. You can adopt draft resolution A, which is a resolution for approval, we do recommend that modified condition for hours of operation of the meeting room. You can also make any other modifications to the conditions of approval or the project in order to meet the required findings. You can adopt draft resolution B for denial of the project. If you choose to deny, deny the project, you only need to make one finding of inconsistency. And of course, the planning commission can always refer the item back to staff and the applicant for additional information. So that does conclude staff's presentation, I'm available for any questions, I know the applicant is also with us online, and they have a presentation they would like to make as well.
Great job, Kelly, hey, and I wanted to mention, it looks like Tori Keen is now with us, so take note of that, Annette, if you can. Oh, yeah, she's.
And I have some ex parte, I need to disclose as well.
Before we start any discussion on this, we'll have to have ex parte for Tori, can you? Or can you offer your expertise, please?
Yes, I had a discussion with Susan Funk, and I had a discussion with Francis, whose last name just went out of my head, the developer's agent, Romero, thank you. And I also drove down to see the Nopomo structure, the Woodlands mini storage, and I took some pictures, which I also shared with Susan Funk, so.
Thank you, Tori. We have any questions of staff at this, at this time? Commissioners? Dennis?
Yes, um, staff, how do you, what's your feelings about the fencing being moved on Viejo Camino to be aligned or with on the building face of building A, would, would the, would the building face not have fence in it, and then they, at the corners of the building is when the fence would start going to the either side of, of the building along Viejo Camino?
That's correct, that is the.
Is there a plan we can put up on the M H M, that area that Commissioner Schmidt's talking about, there we go.
So this is the applicant's proposal that includes fencing starting at the corner of the building and then connecting to their security gate area. In conversations with the applicant today, they're proposing that they grow vines up that portion of the building. I believe the wall of that building is constructed in a, in a concrete block split-face type material that's textured, so vines would be able to grow up that fairly easily. We would recommend that you would add a condition requiring vines. As we know, large block faces of walls can be a graffiti nuisance. And so we'd wanna make sure that we include shrubs and vines and bushes and trees that would deter that activity to the greatest extent possible.
So the fencing in general is being used for protection against, for, in this particular case, graffiti on the buildings, one of the reasons, I would assume. Has there been any thought about what vines do to walls? Has there been any thought about what vines do to walls and buildings? They are can be very strong and I've seen them tear walls up. Has that been discussed or addressed at all?
We have not had time to discuss that with the applicant, but I'm sure that they would be happy to discuss that this evening.
In the previous meeting, we I had added in my motion the creating of open space for that for the area to the southwest. And in thinking about that, if the commission goes along with it, I I I kind of understand that the channel right now has has banks on either side, but could not the side that faces the southwest or that open space area, could it not be that bank kind of removed in it in that area? So that area would be more of a floodplain for water, that any water that comes through that area. Has any discussion about that?
So we've had some discussion to date. The previous project that they submitted did a full hydrology analysis and also had a slightly different process in terms of the environmental impacts to any potential onsite wetland areas from the especially from the frontage improvements along El Camino Real. And so a large portion of that area of the site in the previous plan was used for onsite stormwater detention, pass-through water maintenance so that they didn't increase flows downstream, and then wetland restoration at a mitigation ratio that was approved through a department of fish and wildlife. We do not have that level of detailed hydrology analysis today. The applicant does believe they can do a lot of their stormwater mitigation onsite and underground facilities, which would reduce the need for some of that onsite area. But we do not have analysis yet to know how much of that area might be used for the new floodplain mapping through the FEMA process, nor if fish and wildlife is going to require any onsite mitigation for wetland impacts, nor if there's going to be a need for stormwater retention or detention on that portion of the property.
It just seems like on the exhibit that you showed about where the floodplains were in the 100-year line, that it somewhat projects into that area already, so.
It could be quite possible that that area is needed.
Can you bring up that a page of the presentation that shows that area, Kelly, please?
Yeah, that was going to be my question as well.
And maybe that maybe the site plan more so. In addition to that, is there anything that shows the site plan with that?
I don't think we have it overlaid in quite that way.
Okay, so we can kind of talk about it. Is this, do we have anything that's more complete than this that shows the whole triangle or? Oh, there we go. That's what I'm, that last one. Go back to that last one. Sorry, this this is perfect because we can see the old project, new project, and then that whole triangle that we're talking about here. And then even the other slide you just showed too as well. That one, which is an area that's just outside of the project's scope. And I think, I think the applicant's concern here is if he does want to have future options in this area, he doesn't want those options taken off the table. But at the same time, I think as staff, we're saying, well, your options may be reduced due to your flood storage or wetland restoration area. But at the same time, maybe you need to offset the development with saying, hey, you're going to offer an amenity to the project to offset the significance of the project and the creek realignment. I think that's where that discussion went about that whole triangle. And so I think there's discretion upon the commission. You can do something with that, but I think it's certainly pertinent for the applicant to weigh in on this.
Yeah, when I spoke with the applicant, that issue did not come up at all. But I'm I just think it, you know, especially with the discussion about increased flows downstreams. I mean, the idea of having, I mean, ephemeral is kind of an interesting word that was used a lot in the in some of the letters to to the commission. And I I kind of wonder if everyone knows what it means. But it it seems to me that if the creek, as it came through underneath El Camino Real, then could meander into that triangular area that that would be beneficial. As I was thinking also when we were discussing that, what happens? It's been a long time since I've been at Paloma Park, but I recall the water that comes off of this property goes is aligned straight behind the the build, the Viejo Camino subdivision. And then there's the other side of, I I don't think that what this water goes through there. But over by the equestrian facility, there is a very straight-aligned portion too. In other words, when the park was put in, the city or the county, whoever did the work, was trying to get the most use out of the park by making straight alignments out of that creek versus having it more natural. And that's as well, I kind of look at that triangular area providing more of a a natural type feature in in there. And then, you know, the with respect to the setback, then there could be more room on the building side for a 20-foot setback. If the creek again was, if the ephemeral flow was allowed to to move out into that triangle. So anyway, I'm still in support of. I know that the applicant had talked about using the triangle in the future, hoping to get some additional development maybe on there. To me, I think would be nice to have it as open space and then use it as a benefit to increase the the wetland riparian corridor that's going through there. Thank you.
Okay, you have questions? And if we limit it to just questions and not statements, that would be great. Tori?
So I have a I have a couple of questions. Um, one is if this project was to be approved, what kind of impact would it have on other mini storages coming into the public zoning in this section? I mean, wouldn't it kind of, would it have an impact on that? Would it be harder for the planning commission to limit other mini storages being developed? In that it would, they would say, well, there's one right there, so clearly it fits the neighborhood. I mean, does that have any kind of impact?
Let me try and answer that question. It may or may not. I think that's really an objective kind of question. But typically, when you have one land use there, it's more difficult to make a finding that it's not compatible with it if you have another. So if you have three houses, somebody wants to add a fourth house, it'd be difficult to make a finding to say that fourth house is not compatible with the neighborhood. If you got a mini storage and somebody wanted to develop more storage next door, it'd be difficult to say that that storage wouldn't be compatible with the neighborhood. So in essence, in my professional opinion, I think it would be easier to see additional uses like this if you have one that gets approved.
I did also want to say that that was a big portion of the city council's discussion when the previous project moved forward. And that is why they added specific language to their finding regarding orderly development of the area.
And then my second question has to do with the general plan update. Kind of two parts. One is there's, is there talk of rezoning this parcel into something that is sort of more compatible? Maybe like commercial neighborhood, you know, as it is zoned to the north, or taking mini storage out of the public zone? Are either of those things up for discussion in the general plan update? So that, you know, there is still opportunity to develop this land, but perhaps something that could be less controversial as belonging in the neighborhood.
Yes, but it's too early to say what our scope of our general plan update will be. And the discussions we're having are only verbal right now about areas we need to focus on. I think we did discuss some of these things in previous hearings about whether this is the right zoning for this location. To second that, the applicant has basically asked the city to include this property in a consideration for our next general plan update. So therefore, that that is, that is something that's already been put forth. However, the city has not officially contemplated anything for that yet. Later this summer, we hope to get into discussions about our general plan update and some early scoping of what that update will include. But we're pretty far from getting on a specific area and talking about what. But I will say that the applicant has an interest in potentially joining an effort to see some different zoning for this property.
And so kind of in regards to that, so if if the project was denied and and it came up for rezoning, approximately, how long would that take? Like, what kind of delay would that put for a project? Is it like a year, two years, five years, or would it just kind of depend on how? I mean, when does the general plan have to be updated, I guess I'm asking?
So we'll be starting that process later this year. We expect that process to take approximately two years from the time we started. So it's, yeah, by the time this property actually is rezoned to something else, if it is included in that process, would be likely about two years from today's date.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
I have a question related, piggybacking off of Tori. It is regarding the zoning currently as is. Is there a way, Kelly, for us to look at that just general zoning in that area? I forget if there's a slide that has, because I'm wondering, you know, in terms of, I think, our first question about, you know, how likely is it that we could make, if this project's approved, a finding that would be difficult to say, oh, we can't, you know, this isn't suitable to make another mini storage. Like, where are the other public zoning areas? I see the the other purple obviously right next to it. Was is there anything beyond this picture that we're seeing that's close nearby?
Yes, well, so this, yeah, so this block of public zoning goes all the way down to Santa Barbara Road, I believe.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to kind of take that into perspective in relation to her question, so, okay.
Okay, any other questions of staff, planning commissioners?
Do we have any other properties that have ever mirrored this particular situation? Or we may might have some more precedence on this?
There are other publicly zoned properties in the city that are privately owned, most notably the ones that are south of Del Rio Road, adjacent to Highway 101. There is a Woods Humane Society and a church there and a similar set of land uses surrounding that where you've got single-family residential surrounding that. And then you've got some privately owned public zone properties. So that's kind of a similar situation, although it's not in the same vicinity.
Okay, and I have one more question. Last time I went into the city to try to do some research on here, I understand that the the waterway, the leg of it was being redirected to where the flow for part of the section was going to be actually straight. And there was mentioned that that can increase the velocity of flow of the runoff of water. I was wondering if as far as all the hydrology and all the discussions, if we've taken that into factor.
So we we don't have a current hydrology analysis just for this project. The previous project did have more of a 90-degree turn directly off of El Camino that went into that remainder area. And then there was kind of a straight shot similar to what's proposed here, but in a more channelized fashion towards Viejo Camino. The hydrology analysis done for that larger project did find that there would be no increased flows or flooding downstream. So it is likely that this realignment will also be able to to meet those findings and requirements, but they will have to go through that process.
Okay, that that's all. Thank you.
Any other planning commissioner comments, questions of staff? In that case, we will open it up to open up the public hearing and we'll invite the applicant and or applicant representative to make their presentation to us. We have our applicant for us.
Yeah. Kelly, I think you're the host now.
Yeah, I promoted Francis to a panelist. So Francis, hopefully you are there and can share your video and share your screen with us.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Here we are. Just get the camera adjusted. Husband had borrowed it this week, so it's not where it should be.
Blame him.
Blame the husband, right? Okay, well, um, thank you so much for coming back here tonight and doing this again. My name is Francis Romero and I'm agent for the applicant Scott Newton. Scott is at a Pismo Beach City Council meeting tonight, so he's unable to be with us again. And I also have the architect and site designer for the project with us tonight as well. That's Locke Soderquist. I did want to apologize for being like the voice on the phone at the last meeting. It was kind of rude, but I kind of totally doped off, so my apologies. Kelly is going to be driving the presentation for me tonight, so I will be going through the the next slide comment. This is a bit of a do-over tonight, but I promise that we'll go over the old slides quickly and we'll spend just a little bit of time on the things that are new from last meeting. Kelly's done a great job again of going through the mechanics of the project and a lot of the technical aspects. And I'll be discussing the recent revisions as well as our proposed revisions. We'll talk a little bit about the site zoning and uses, self-storage, the changes from 2019 till now. I'll also be touching on operations as well as the merits of the project, and I'll be responding to some of the public comments that are not accurate. And I'll discuss how this project will complement the surrounding neighborhood as well as the community of Atascadero. This first slide is a view from Viejo Camino across the parking lot, looking at Building A. And that will serve as the business office for the Dove Creek Self-Storage Facility. Well, you know that our prior project was appealed to the city council. We are here to present some major changes from the project based on that feedback that we received at that meeting. And we've also made some changes since the feedback we received at the last meeting. Our goal today is to demonstrate that Dove Creek Self-Storage is compatible with the surrounding community. Next slide. It's always good to know where you are, and I think everybody is super familiar with the site at this point. But I just wanted to recap since some of the comment letters seem to keep flashing back to the project from 2019. When we initially, when when we went from that hearing to the new application, we we tried to come with up with a project that addressed some of the things that we heard from the council. And one of those efforts was to put in a business center in Building A, which included co-working. When we went to DRC, we found out what would be involved with going through a general plan amendment and text agreement, text amendment. We dropped that totally from our project description, so there is no co-working. There is not going to be any business development at this site any longer. But that's when we said, well, let's leave the meeting room in for a community space and a community benefit. So those are the things that changed after the city council meeting. We also removed the large, we changed the massing of the project and we removed the large block walls that many found objectionable. Next slide. So this is, you've seen this a couple of times, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time here. But we did go to a six-foot-tall tubular steel fence, as Kelly indicated, with approximately two-thirds of an acre of landscape around the perimeter of the site and in the creek, as well as around the building's interior of the site. The area highlighted in yellow is a pedestrian path from Viejo Camino and El Camino Real. At your last meeting, you heard some concerns from city staff about that particular path. We met with city staff and you have new conditions of approval in your packet today that talk about the fact that we're going to be able to do this. We will have bollards at either end of the path to preclude any vehicular traffic and to allow for vehicular traffic from city vehicles to maintain the sewer easement. Something that we've added to this site plan you're looking at is the drinking fountain and bike repair station that is closest to Viejo Camino toward the very start of the path or the end of the path, depending on what direction you're coming from. And we we think that that would be a good amenity being on the Paloma Park side of the project. And if you're agreeable to that, we're agreeable to make it a condition of approval for our project. We also want to point out the difference in size of the. We also want to point out the difference in size of the triangular piece. We were a little remiss at our last meeting. The first project, that piece was 0.74 acres. In this project, it's 1.48 acres because of the shrinking of the storage facility. So what we've kind of envisioned, and we're certainly open to thoughts and discussion, is Scott reduced his project by 32% his storage facility. So he was looking at this remainder portion as a potential opportunity to do something additional. Talking about putting the basin storage below the project. It's a fill site, so it's not a real difficult thing to do to put the stormwater as well as the rainwater retention. And the creek has been enlarged a little bit. It certainly may end up larger after we deal with Army Corps and hydrology studies. But our hope is that we'll be doing the riparian restoration along the creek so that the creek can be a really great feature for the for the site and the community. So the bottom of the channel and the sides are dirt, so they do meet, the creek meets all of the requirements that the city, the city has. So some of the comment letters, I don't think we're really understanding those particular details. Scott did provide an email, as you're all aware of, to request rezoning of that remainder portion, possibly for multifamily. If that effort were to fail, we have talked about, well, Scott, it is a P-zone parcel. What would be the use that you would come back and propose on that site? And we have discussed daycare because that is already an accepted use within the the area with the other surrounding daycare, childcare centers and the fact that it is a huge need for really pretty much any community these days. Our next slide. Some people are visual, so we just wanted to show what the bike repair station looked like, a potential for a dog and person watering, drinking fountain, the path from side to side of the site, and what we envision as a creek restoration project. Next slide. Kelly's already covered this detail. When we initially met with staff after the meeting and we're trying to figure out, well, how to address the landscape, we had initially thought, oh, why don't we just move the building five feet? And then that would kind of shift the whole site depending on turning radiuses. And when our site designer looked at the site again, he said, well, or we can pick up 11 feet, an 11-foot width for doing street trees, shrubs and climbing vines on the CMU block building. So that's another option. We're certainly open to moving building if that's needed as well. We just want to make it right and make sure it looks good. Next slide. Just wanted to briefly touch on this. We showed you this slide last time, and we do want you to be assured that we are trying to do an environmentally friendly project. Next slide. We can't quite get through this presentation without a little talk about the P-zone, and we've already had some discussion about the P-zone, which is a different zone in the city. If this project were owned by government, P-zone, you'd put something like a high school, a post office, museum, or government offices. When it's privately owned, there are other uses that can be contemplated, and some of the permitted uses are pictured here. I kind of like the picture better than going through a list, but, you know, it's movie theaters, bowling alleys, go-kart tracks. I think shooting range got the most excitement out of our last presentation, so I'll mention that one. And then next slide, please. And then conditional uses actually have more of a residential look and feel. And those include residential care facility, rehab facilities, churches, a home, childcare, and self-storage facilities. Next slide. What is a modern Class A self-storage facility? Currently, you don't have any in the city of Atascadero. Based on my review of the comment letters, there still seems to be some confusion about our project. We're proposing a project that is consistent with each of the design considerations listed on this slide. Next slide. Our designer chose to go with an agrarian design based on the surrounding area, and these are the images that inspired his architecture. Next slide. I don't think you can talk about storage without talking about what you currently have in town, and that's not what we're proposing in the least. I want to just kind of go quickly through these next several slides. And I want you to be aware that these properties range from industrial to a variety of commercial zonings. And some of these projects are actually built-in zones that prohibit many storage. There is no ability to permit it. So why don't we just go through these slides, Kelly? I know everybody has seen them. Next slide. As you can see, all of these are also adjacent to neighborhoods with houses. And that brings us through to a slide I'd like to talk about a little bit. Mind you, all of those are things we're not proposing to do. We don't want to look like those other storage facilities. However, I'd like to show you how Scott maintains his storage facilities, and I want you to bear in mind that the the two examples of what he currently owns are Class B and Class C facilities. And that's not what he's planning on doing here. He's planning on bringing a Class A storage facility to the city of Atascadero. But there have been some public comments. There have been some photos submitted that are highly unflattering and some are simply not even accurate. So we want to have this on the record so that you know what they look like. The Woodlands Self-Storage Facility is about an approved four-acre expansion that would occur to the north side of the site. It's not yet built. That would be to the left of the site, and that area would be immediately adjacent to the homes at Monarch Dunes. Next slide. The Morel Secure Storage Facility is something that Scott did not build. It was built in 1997. The photos you received in a comment letter showed pictures that predated Scott's ownership and since and and showed some overgrown, very unattractive landscape. This is how Scott maintains his facilities. So that, just wanted to assure the community that should this project be approved, it's not going to be a degraded site, as many have said, many comments, very unflattering comments about a variety of horrible things that are going to happen to your community if a storage facility is approved, simply aren't true. Next slide. So Kelly showed you a very similar slide, and I just wanted to make sure that you see where we were and where we are now. A 32% reduction of self-storage building square footage, a reduced number of buildings, and approximately 2/3 of an acre of landscaping. This overall site is 4.32 acres. Next slide. This is also kind of a before and after. These were the renderings that were initially done for the first presentation versus the new rendering. And this right here is a view from El Camino Real looking east. Next slide. This is a view of Viejo, a view from Viejo Camino looking southwest. Next slide. As I noted earlier, we would like to remove the community meeting room from the project because it can generate up to 68 trips per meeting. So that's not necessarily per day, but that is per meeting. And, you know, based on all the public comment we've heard and we've we've read every letter, we've listened to what everyone has to say, there, there is a lot of concern about traffic. But I've not really seen a letter that says, gosh, we really need that community room. So I have presented a revised project description at the end of my slides at, prepared it at Kelly's request to show you what we would want to change. If if that is removed from Building A, we would suggest that that area would be converted into conditioned storage space. So things like archival documents or artifacts, things of that nature could be stored in a temperature-controlled area. And again, 77 trips a day, as I think Kelly said it the best, you know, that's like seven single-family homes. You're not looking at more than three cars going in and out in the morning hours, at peak hours, or five cars in the the late afternoon. Next slide. Neighborhood compatibility is certainly very important. This facility will have a state-of-the-art monitoring system for entry and site security. Despite the concerns voiced by many, there will be no workshop use, no storage of hazardous materials. No one will be living in the units. This facility will store items that you don't have room for at your home or apartment. It may allow some to finally fit a car into their garage. We did that this this past year, and it was pretty amazing. We didn't get storage. We, my husband just got motivated. He got a really nice car and all of a sudden, she is, she's like having another woman living with us, is in the garage and the churches will use this space, nonprofits, sport teams, they'll be able to store tables, chairs, stages, costumes, bats, balls, black backstops, other items that support their mission. Businesses and home business may have to store excess stock. None of these are industrial uses. It's just stuff. Stuff you would otherwise have in your home or in your place of business if you have the space. This project will have the least impact of anything you could possibly build on this site. Next slide. Our goal is to provide a safe and secure Class A facility to serve this community. We hope you will find us compatible in use and appearance with our surrounding neighborhood. This unique design concept does not appear to be a storage product, project due to the elevated design concepts, landscape, high-quality materials and color palette. It is unlike the other storage facilities in the city. It has every appearance of a gateway quality project. This all comes at a significant cost. The storage project will look and feel like a high-end residential or commercial project. With that, I truly do thank you for your time on this, and hopefully the meeting won't go as long, but if it does, I've got my iPad ready to take great notes, so I can download it to Scott. I have four quick slides that show the detail that staff asked us to have prepared. Kelly, do you want to go to those? And basically, it's a strikeout version of our project description. On this particular slide, we've we've stricken out any information having to do with the public assembly space, also known as the meeting room. It also clarified access hours. Here, we just talk about the, instead of storage in four buildings, as previously stated, if we had conditioned storage in Building A, that would give us five buildings. We wanted to be totally accurate on that. Next slide. And the lot merger, I know there has been a lot of focus on the triangle piece. I wasn't on the original project, and perhaps Kelly or Phil can kind of fill you guys in a little bit more better than I can. But I'm told that some sort of flooding study had been lost at the city, so when Scott came in for this site, he had to do kind of an extra-big flooding drainage study, and it was extremely costly in the low-six-figure number, which was why he didn't jump up and volunteer to do another hydrologic study for this smaller revised project. Certainly, that would have to be provided if he has an approved project, and given the project history, staff was very kind in saying that that could be deferred to construction docs. So while we believe that all of the drainage and rainwater can be stored beneath the site, we certainly are going to have to permit this with Army Corps. We are going to do whatever the requirement is to make this a great project, make it safe for our neighbors. So we're just trying to keep some options open for Scott since he did indeed reduce the size of his initial project. And he has come in with probably the most expensive build he can come up with for a storage facility. So with the last slide here, I have a couple of revised conditions of approval that would would, well, Condition 20 would no longer be necessary if we didn't have a community room. Condition 22 would be revised if we didn't have a community room. And Condition 24 is getting back to Building E and what your preferences are. We believe we can meet all of the requirements and criteria for landscape by doing what we've proposed. So that would be our alternate language, should you agree with us. With that, thank you so much and look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Frances. Okay, we're going to open this up to public comment at this time. And if you would like to make comment on this item, if you would please raise your hand as an attendee, or if you're on the phone, please press star nine. And we will bring you into the meeting to make your, your comment.
Okay, first, we have Monte Claus.
Good evening. Thank you for the information and the overviews. I am very concerned about the proposed project. Lived in the area for 15 years and walked, walked all of it many times. I think that the main concern that I have is that while there's a lot of reasons that people want to see this project as being suitable, it is nowhere consistent with the area around it. The landscaping, the fencing, the design, I understand they make a difference. They're not going to make it look like it fits there. The scale of the structures, the design, the usage is wholly different from this. This is a large facility. Still, it's not going to fit there. It will not look like the area. It will disrupt the orderly development of the neighborhoods because it's so very, very different from everything in that area. While the visuals that are being presented to us are persuasive, being in the area, living in the area, enjoying and utilizing the area, anybody would see and would know that it does not fit. That's why the commission has received such an overwhelming proportion of residents saying it doesn't fit. My second point is simply about the watershed issues. We know the general plan says watershed areas of Atascadero should be protected. Policy 8.1 says, ensure that development along the Tascadero Creek, Graves Creek, the Salinas River, Blue Line Creeks, and natural springs, lakes, or other riparian areas does not interrupt natural flows or adversely impact riparian ecosystems and water quality. This ephemeral or seasonal creek is a blue-line creek. What we're proposing is to take the creek, realign it, and basically make it a kind of creek, not a real creek. It won't be a real creek that provides that provides irrigation to the perfect degree to which water is input and the land and the living things in that area need it. That's a perfect creek, as it is. Unbeautiful and plain as it is. Changing it is not in line with the general plan. The general plan also in its programs under that section says the waterways in the city shall be maintained in a natural state and concrete channelization creeks shall be prohibited. I understand this is not a concrete channel, channelization creek, but we're talking about absolutely changing its natural state. The next program says the city shall strongly discourage underground piping and unnecessary disturbance of creeks and streams. I just want to point out, this is an unnecessary disturbance. Now, I know that for developers and for people who want to see this go forward, that may be very disappointing. But I feel that the planning commission is trying to almost stand on its head to make this work. We're talking about a conditional use permit, which allows something that wouldn't otherwise be allowed here. It is not of a scale and mass and size that fits and usage that fits into the South Atascadero neighborhoods and changing for no good reason a wetland that's functioning very well. Please reject this project. Thank you.
If you want to. You have any other people online that would like to make any comments? Please raise your hand now. Or if you're on the phone, please press star nine. And if you could limit your remarks to three minutes, please, we will, I'll be keeping track of the time, so.
And and if you would like to speak, multiple people can raise.
And, and if you would like to speak, multiple people can raise their hand at the same time. Um, and the Zoom meeting does order you and we will take you in order. Um, so we don't have any pauses in between comment. Thank you. I'm not seeing any raised hands at the time, so we'll do last call for public comment.
We have a couple that raised their hands, so we'll go first with V Pierce.
Bye.
Bye.
Hello?
Hello, bye. You could please, uh, state your name and please let me comment to three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, my name is V Pierce and I live in Los Lomas. I have a question about, um, with the elimination of the community meeting space. If the applicant was, uh, then going to eliminate the parking spots as well, seeing that there might not be a need for it anymore. Um, and so I wondered with all these different changes to the project, you know, how would you be able to approve, um, a conditional use permit without more specifications? That was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, V.
Next we have Amorina.
That was a good job. Thank you. Um, I'm Amorina Inker. I live up in Los Lomas as well. I didn't plan to prepare anything, but I just couldn't let the meeting go without having some comment. It seems that the city is very bent on this particular development. I've lived here for about seven years and I don't see a need for storage in this city, let alone um, in this particular place. And I just ask as a parent, someone who spends a lot of time at Paloma Park. I know there was a mention from somebody, um, that they haven't been to Paloma Park more. It just seems that there's a better use for this space that would provide tax dollars, jobs and family-friendly atmosphere to this part of town. We don't have anything at this end of town. And I would just like the whole concept to be reconsidered to make something that is more compatible for the families and communities that live here. And there would be a better gateway for people coming in. I did send on my letter. You know, Paso has their Paso Market Walk that they call the Gateway to Paso now at the north end. San Luis Obispo has a new, uh, market walk at like Tank Farm and Higera. I just feel like this concept is very limiting. Um, and is not providing the things that we as a city need to keep people here to shop, to work, to dine and to spend their money in town. Um, it's a very limited use of a very useful portion. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Do we have any other participants? Yes, Clyde.
Yes, uh, thank you for, uh, recognizing me for this time. I'm going to comment on the comments I sent in, so that we no need to review, uh, the full length of it. In short, the decision that was made by the city council in September of 2019 is pretty compelling. The deciding votes were two, uh, quite conservative business people. The mayor Newsom and, uh, councilperson Fonzie. And they really stress the kind of generational element of this. That once you get, and this has been addressed earlier in the meeting, once you get a storage unit in here, it opens the door to like development as, uh, Phil Dunsmore was saying, the, uh, could be RVs, could be who knows what, uh, classic elephant sticking their nose under the tent. The best use of the parcel, uh, to the view, from the view of many of the neighbors is no development. Uh, there's, because the hydrology issues and the land contour, which kind of really, uh, narrows the scope of what can be done in terms of development. My thought has always been along the way. This is a prime space for a, uh, educational, touristic introduction to the town of Atascadero, the Salinas Valley. That's kind of large in scope, but that would, uh, utilize, um, the use of the planting zone and the, uh, the smaller ideas, the residential neighborhood, uh, park, additional green space. There's been along the way, some discussion with various people in scattered groups around Dub Creek about, purchasing the park through a land trust of sorts and there is a, a template to do that. Uh, one, we have to get a concerted group of people, that are interested and would carry through on it. The second is that the land has to be available at an appraised value. And with all the money that, uh, Scott Newton has put into it, I wonder if that is a feasible alternative, but it involves some other issues about getting, um, managing and tax liability and all that. The other element I want to bring in there quickly is this whole idea of Mr. Newton's current voice in that this, his, uh, his representative, uh, Mr. Romero is very articulate. She's an excellent salesperson. I mean, if you could, uh, put anything in that place and she could make it sound good. My, one of my issues is perhaps.
Mr. Snyder, uh, your three minutes is up. I'm sorry.
Can, uh, can the city attorney address the issue of Mr. Newton directly engaging with, uh, members Anderson and Schmidt? Should not his, uh, representative be doing that since he's elected member of the Pisno City Council?
Can you repeat that? I'm not, I'm not familiar with the background of that issue.
Yes, Mr. Newton was elected to the Pismo Beach City Council in November. And as you recall during the ex parte, two of the commissioners, uh, Mr. Mr. Anderson and Schmidt said they had phone conversations with the, um, with the applicant. And I was wondering if that is, uh, is an ethical standard. Does that not convey some sense of, uh, impropriety in dealing directly with a, um, member of the Tascadaro City Council from your position as a Pismo Beach City Council person?
No, I'm not aware of any legal authority that would, support the conclusion that that would be a conflict of interest. I think the, the, the disclosure of those, uh, ex parte communications is sufficient. Uh, the fact that that person is a council member in another city would not be a, a, and the fact, the fact that he's a council member in another city and that, that he spoke with members of the commission would not rise the level of any conflict of interest under any applicable state law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Okay, do we have any other attendees that would like to speak on this issue? If you're on the phone, you can press star nine, otherwise you can raise your hand. I don't see any, so maybe we can move to, oh, here's one, uh, it's a phone number.
Um, yes, the number ending in one zero nine two.
Yes, hello.
Hello, if you could please state your name and.
Yeah, my name is Rob, Rob Fell and I live in, on La Paloma. Um, I've just, I just don't get this whole thing. Uh, everybody has gone through this long drawn out thing before and the city council made a decision because it didn't fit in the neighborhood. Now they've put some more bushes up and maybe did this and did that, but it still is exactly what the city council said it did not fit. It, it's a big metal building with a big wall all around it, whether it be a wall with a or it's just the same thing. And it just seems like how much money does this person have to throw at this over, over and over again until he gets away? Yeah, I know everybody that I spoke to about the whole project is just getting just so depressed about it because it's just like, w- w- when's it end? I know something will probably go there someday and, and that's great. It's just this storage unit doesn't fit in our neighborhood at all. And I, I, I just, I don't know. I'm, I'm pretty frustrated with the whole situation. The last meeting that we had, um, if you listen to the whole meeting, that whole four and a half hours or however long it was, you would have thought there was going to be a completely different outcome from the meeting. Then at the last second, it seemed like everybody kind of changed their mind. It was kind of strange. There's just been a lot of stuff in Atascadero that's happened kind of like this. I just hope there's been a history of, of things going not well. So anyway, um, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Rob, for your comments. Uh, while we were waiting for more comments, can we have, um, Annette, can we read into the record or talk about some of the letters that we received?
Yes, um, so what we decided we're going to do is I'm gonna, I'm going to give you the name of the person that wrote in and forgive me if some of these, are duplicates because we had a regular email, some going to council and some going to the PC comment box. So, um, anyway, I'm just going to go ahead and read the name and yes or no. And you all have received these via email and these will all be exhibits to the minute. Okay. Uh, so the first one here is from Monte Klaus and that's no, and you all received that this afternoon. Okay, Bing Anderson, no. Nancy Ayers, no. Colleen Anne's, no. Heidi Barnett, yes. Stephen Davis, no. Rob Fell, no. Ashley Frye, no. Donna G, no. Jim Hanson, yes. Anna King, yes. Carolyn Lee, no. Miss Luke, yes. Kathy and Jerry Lemoine, no. Camille O'Brien, no. Chris, Chris Quattlebaum, no. Vance Ray, no. This one is from three people, Richard and Rosemary Smith, Camille O'Brien and Janet Marietta, no. Japhra Thomas, no. Juan, Juan Wang, no. Drake Woods, yes. Zoe Zappus, yes. Colleen Anne's, no. Janet Marietta, no. Steve Maloney, no. This is from Susan Harvey of the North County Watch and that's a no. By Pierce, no. Um, Scott Newton, of course, yes, he, uh, was, that was the email that was referred to earlier that went to some of the commissioners. Susan Riojas, no. Brian Schultz, no. Steve Silva, no. Frank Scotty, yes. Sorry, I'm on my last stack. The Anchor Family, no. Arlene Cruz, no. Robert N. Novi Chambers, yes. Margaret Herzic, no. Greg Paddle Ford, no. Killoran Riddle, no. Clyde Snyder, no. Josh Thues, yes. And Max Zappus, yes. And that would be it.
I ran out of paper to write all those down and that, um, I think I lost my tally at the bottom of the page. It started getting messy. But, uh, it's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Summary. Thank you. And when we have still another public comment, looks like with your hand raised as well, so.
Yes, so we'll, we'll move to Steve Maloney.
Yes, yes, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. No, I was, I'm very interested in this project. Uh, I live in the neighborhood and, um, I was a bit surprised when I, uh, and I'm new to Atascadero, by the way. A bit surprised and I learned of, uh, this proposal for that, the lot down in, um, down the street for me and it literally is down the street. And I'm wondering to myself, um, for the city of Atascadero, from the standpoint of one individual asking for a zoning change for, uh, the benefit of really just one, why you would consider this for that particular land use, considering that in the south end of town, the, um, the neighborhoods and what have you don't seem to be anywhere near consistent with that type of structure. And, um, I'm, I'm interested to know why the, the, uh, or if we can just ignore the, uh, I don't want to say ignore, but, um, you know, we have one individual looking to benefit from this where a vast majority of the people live here, uh, find it not necessarily to their benefit. They're 18, by the way, if you haven't, uh, staff hasn't done this. There are 18 storage units between Paso Robos and Atascadero. Uh, so there's no lack of supply for this type of service. Why it needs to be placed here in this most bucolic of areas of the city, where land is becoming more and more scarce is, uh, is very much a question to me or that I have. Uh, it seems like it's not the highest and best use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve. Okay, do we have any other attendees that would like to make a comment, public comment? So please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any additional raised hands, so I'm going to, uh, close the public comment portion of the the meeting. And if we can, um, have staff address some of the questions that were brought up by our, the public who spoke.
Yes, and, uh, Chair, do you have any specific questions you had in mind? And there was quite a few.
Uh, Mr. Rob Fell asked, why did this come back to the city? Maybe you could address that? Since.
So they are, we have no moratorium on reapplying for a conditional use permit, so they, they can reapply at any time after a project action has been taken.
Thank you. Let's see. Well, the question was about elimination and whether or not of parking spaces and whether or not, um, removal of the, of the office space or the shared space can, would require, uh, new application or?
Yeah, there would be, uh, less parking required, um, if the community meeting space was removed. Um, so if the commission wanted to see additional landscaping in that area, uh, you could condition that they approve, uh, the minimum spaces for the mini storage use um, and the associated office and that any additional parking spaces be converted to landscaped area.
Uh, one of the questions was regarding or comments and I wanted to get staff's take on this was the creek alignment. Our general plan and the, you know, how it's outlined, that we shouldn't disturb the alignments, but we know that throughout town that has happened. Can you talk to that issue?
Certainly. I think part of that is addressed in the environmental analysis, but a bigger part of it really is about policy. And our general plan has a number of policies that are designed to protect watersheds, designed to protect creeks, designed to protect these areas, uh, like that. And essentially these policies discourage development to encroaching on those wetland areas and on those creek areas. So that's a significant consideration, um, in this particular project. Now the question is the quality. in this particular project. Now, the question is, the quality of that creek ephemeral, those things do weigh into it. I mean, this is a denuded creek because it's been grazed, but still it is a waterway. And its preservation and its modification does have impacts downstream, so it's certainly a, a consideration factor in the project. And, um, sorry, these have been done elsewhere and it can be done. It's not something that is unachievable if it can be accommodated in terms of engineering the waterway, but again, it's something policies speak against generally, um, whether it's ephemeral or not. And just, I think as Commissioner, uh, Schmidt way in, what is, what does ephemeral mean? It means for a very brief time, things of this creek is, is seasonal. It does certainly dry up and especially this year where we haven't had much rain, but nonetheless, it's a waterway that eventually winds its way into the Salinas River. And these policies in our general plan were written to protect the sedimentation of these areas and to preserve water quality and, um, you know, it's certainly a consideration, but in some cases, when you move and realign a creek and do good engineering, do good landscaping, sometimes you can improve those conditions, especially if you remove the animal and grazing component and you plant the species that are appropriate to avoid the sedimentation, you can improve those things. So with the right conditions inserted into this project, with the right things happening, that could occur. But again, should you be messing with it at all is the question that a lot of these policies get into. So that's definitely a, a planning commission consideration. It's a consideration that's been brought up by the public um, that, um, is right alongside the bigger question of neighborhood compatibility, which has also been the big topic from the neighborhood and previously from the city council.
Thank you, Phil. So can, can you expand upon that particular thing and what happened in Dove Creek? Cause I believe that there were some realignments in, with the Dove Creek project as well. Can you?
Yes, Dove Creek is a really good example of that because there was multiple waterways which run through these same properties that run into the Salinas River eventually and run several different directions that were realigned to develop the prime housing areas and to cluster those housing areas. And then the creek areas were restored. They were planted. They, there were open space areas put in place where there wasn't open space before. And it enriched those areas while allowing development of the site. So that is probably a good successful example where you were able to do a development project and get a preservation and get some open space and get some trails and also get some habitat brought back. And now you see some habitat areas in there that have been um, kind of nicely restored. So that, that's a similar thing that happened. Um, it does happen. There is a sort of give and take and exchange. In other words, um, hey, we're doing a project, so we're gonna set aside some land or we're gonna do some preservation efforts. Certainly a consideration that, that we need to take into account here, um, based on modifying that waterway. I don't know if Kelly has anything else to add on that as well, sorry.
I think you about covered it. Um, yeah, Dove Creek did also go through the FEMA process to do some remapping. Um, so it was similar and they ended up with a large area of wetland mitigation, um, and restoration.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll go ahead and open up for, um, planning commissioners to ask questions of staff or have any kind of discussion.
Oh, one more item, Wayne, I'm sorry, Chair. The question I did hear from one of the speakers too was, we don't need any more mini storages in town and is this a consideration? We, you know, we don't need any more of this land use. We're totally fine between here and Paso. That may be a fact. That may certainly be a fact, but is it one of the factors that we consider in our policies or in our code or in our general plan? No. Um, is it a factor the planning commission can consider? Well, it's a conditional use permit, so certainly I think you can consider all of those types of things, um, but that isn't in your staff recommendation because it's not one of the criteria for us making specific findings to as an eye or approve a project. That is up to the free market. Just wanted to mention that.
Um, before we move on then, let me, let me ask Kelly, uh, what is the radius of notification for this particular project?
So our code, uh, requires, uh, 300 feet for notification in this zone. Um, and then we did have, um, interested people who had supplied email addresses, uh, from public comment letters and from before that we also sent notification to.
Does, so does the Bordeaux apartments fall within that zone and do all of the residents receive notifications of these meetings?
Um, if you give me a minute, I can check that real quick. Only the radius, the radius map is attached to the traffic file.
And, and, let me just state that I think that, um, you know, they should be included in this kind of discussion if they weren't, um, only because they might be the primary users, the lower income people might be the primary users of these units, people that do not have homes, do not own their homes, do not have the space to store their stuff, might be the primary users of these types, you know, so that's why I'm curious, that's why we haven't heard anything, so.
Sure, so this is the radius map, um, and we do send it to owner and occupant, so it should, all those little blue dots are addresses that we send occupant mailings to. Um, and then obviously the parcels, the owner is sent to, so, um, it, it hits a portion of these apartments over here, um, but not the entirety of the area.
Thank you. All right, we will, um, oh, you know what, before we get into some deliberations, can we take a five-minute break? And then we'll come back with, with this and we can discuss this somewhere. So we'll set timer for five minutes and come back. So please make sure you come back in five minutes. Thank you. Okay, it looks like we're all missing Tori, so, um, I'll be her a minute or so. Oh, there she is, okay. Welcome back.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'd like to open it for discussion for the planning commission. Everybody wanna go first? Okay, Randy.
Uh, this one would be for the city for staff. Um, as far as for circulation is concerned, would you guys be considering foot traffic a form of circulation that we would view it as park bike as far as when we look at the circulation element and how it applies? Does that include the traffic?
Kelly, are you answering that? That was a very good, well-educated question there, Randy.
Yeah, our circulation element in the, in the general plan, um, I think has a lot of policies, uh, street sections and things that are vehicular related. Um, but we also do have some policies that promote modal transportation, which would include pedestrians, bicyclists, things of that nature. Um, it generally relates to, uh, the public right of way and things like that.
Okay, um, I have one other, uh, question, uh, right now. So as far as considering a neighborhood aspect, um, this construction project, what limits where the ending of that neighborhood is, is being impacted? Is it the 300 feet where they're having to send every person a letter within that vicinity, or is there a specific cutoff where we could say, hey, this is the exact collateral area that's being affected as a neighborhood?
Yeah, neighborhoods are not, um, so clearly defined in that way. And then especially Atascadero when streets wind around and, um, you know, lots of people see neighborhood in a broader sense on the west side. Um, and you know, we don't have a traditional grid pattern where maybe, um, it's, it's more clear. Um, so that really is sort of at sort of the discretion of planning commission to interpret based on
Yeah.
the general plan.
There's two, there's two things at work here. One is the legal requirements of notification, which we follow, which is 300 foot. Then there's the true, hey, how could this impact an area? That could be limitless. I mean, someone could say that, hey, that impacts me on the north end of Atascadero because I drive by this site all the time. That impacts me. I'm a quarter mile away, but I'm on a hill and I look down on the site. So that is so subjective as to what that impact boundary is and there's no definitive way of, of saying that.
And, and that's, that's why I'm asking, so, um, that does kind of, um, that's something that, you know, if there was a solid scope where we could say, hey, boom, this, this area is the one that affected, you know, because I mean, as far as the area of origin of complaint here, most of it is, you know, Dove Creek or, uh, Palomar, right, right, right on the backside there. Um, so, okay, so those are my two questions for now. I had another one and I just totally lost it. My brain's getting old on me.
Any other questions of staff? Yeah.
Okay, just remembered it, sorry, a little ADHD there for a second. Um, so as far as this area being zoned in the way that it is, has the city of Atascadero ever designated this area to be the current zoning or was it absorbed from when we grabbed everything from the county? Like, have we ever made a direct action to say, this zoning makes sense?
I don't, we followed it, yeah, all the way back. Um, what we were able to discover, uh, quickly, uh, just looking at some of our more recent resources. Um, and Phil, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we discovered that this area was zoned public already before the 2002 general plan update. Um, and so at least for the time period preceding 2002, um, they were publicly zoned properties and it did not change designation, um, in 2002 or later.
Yeah, so at least for the last 25 years, it has had that designation, but we are, are not sure whether that designation was in place prior to city incorporation, which was 79. Um, it's hard to say. Um, so yeah, I don't know, I don't know exactly.
We have some old maps in the office, but not at our houses.
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking is, I mean, I understand we incorporated late. There are things like the state hospital or things that are like, oh, we've kind of operated here and we've always been this one street town. You have the concept of a gateway which everyone's bringing up in a lot of these email bashes we've been getting. But at some point where the zoning is at, you look at, okay, does this conflict? Does it not? And so that's where I'm trying to figure out what exactly was the task or mission goal or thought process behind this. So apologize for asking you to bring out the imaginary map there.
Yeah, that's, it's a very good question because we have contemplated the same as planners. We look at this and go, how did this end up public and why is it that way? And there's not a great record on it. We made some assumptions based on the fact that there are two flood zones running through this area. There are two creekways running through this area. It is bounded by roads on either side. It is at the gateway to the city. It is adjacent to land that's been used for parkland for many years and it is adjacent to the state hospital. So all these things are assumptions as to why it ended up as public zoning, but we don't have a direct, I can tell you exactly why this occurred and when it occurred.
And just one last question, my little rabbit brain's going off right now. Um, last meeting, we had discussed the pathway that was gonna be on the northern end of the property. And there was mention that, you know, we have, we had concerns. One of the arguments for doing this pathway was, uh, a lot of people use the church property to run through the back, right? So we're making the argument here that, oh, we're putting a path up here that makes sense. It's delineated. The city seemed, it didn't really like that idea because they didn't want people running across El Camino there. And if I interpreted this meeting right, the path's still there, but now there's bollards. Um, so is there any way to get some clarification on that as far as that path, is it still there and was that whole set of, uh, bollards there for that?
So the, the pathway is still part of the plan. Um, the bollards are really there to prehend, to prevent vehicular traffic from driving on that pathway. The pathway is also located above the city's sewer easement. And so we do need access for maintenance and so there is gonna be a drivable surface that is wide enough for a vehicle. Um, there is, uh, no condition necessarily to place a public access easement over the trail. Um, the, the trail would exist and the sewer easement would exist and of course it would be a The, the trail would exist and the sewer easement would exist. And of course, it would be a walkable surface for people to cut through. Our city engineer always has concerns about pathways leading to areas of busy streets where there's no controlled crosswalk. So the path, the way it's designed now is access to our sewer easement that pedestrians would of course not be prohibited from walking on. So I guess you can take it that far.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is, is one, whether people want to use the, the church property or not, you know, if they get hit on their own fruition trying to walk across traffic, I mean, they made an action there. I would hate to see the city make a, make an idea to subsidize something to where now you're creating a reasonable form of traffic. And as people play Frogger across the roadway, what that could open the city up for litigation wise? That, that was just the basis.
It's always people's responsibility to cross safely and legally. What our city engineer gets is a lot of requests. Once we have certain connections towards the street with no controlled crossing, he gets annual requests to provide a crosswalk with the little push button. And we're not fond of those because those really don't make it any safer. So it's public application at that point.
Okay.
Questions, Randy? Any other questions of staff? Tori?
So on the sort of going along with the history of the public zoning, do we know when or why mini storage was included in the public zone? Is that a normal inclusive in public zone or is that special to Tascadero?
It appears to be somewhat unique to Tascadero, and it's something that the city council contemplated when this project was denied. Why is that in the public zone? And is there any public zone in the city of Tascadero where this land use might be appropriate? But instead of eliminating that land use from that district, the city council said, let's contemplate that with our citywide general plan update so we can take a more comprehensive look at land uses and what's appropriate where. But that's certainly a great question. And I think it's a question that staff brought up as well because it doesn't feel like it's a land use that fits perfectly squarely within the public zoning district. And perhaps that's why it's a conditional use. It might be okay. It might not be okay.
I have, I have a couple of questions. One is, if the project is denied by the planning commission, is there, does the applicant have any options as far as appealing the decision of planning commission?
Yeah, so any decision made by the planning commission can be appealed to a city council within 14 days of the decision. So I, either decision that's made can be appealed to city council.
So the planning, just like last time, if the planning commission were to approve it, it could be appealed to the city council once again and vice versa.
Correct. There is that 14 day window, so we just want to make that clear.
Yeah, okay. Is there any sense of who the general users are of these mini storage as far as based on income or anything like that?
We don't have any of those statistics to share.
I actually have a similar question slash comment that, that Jeff just brought up. It was around just, it seems as though, and I think Commissioner Keen brought this up at our last commission meeting, that the existing Tascadero mini storage facilities have some vacancy. So you would lead one to think, okay, why do we need another one when there's already room for people to go and call and get their stuff stored? But I'm also recalling talking to the agent, Frances Romero, and she did make a comment to me something about how there's people in Tascadero now that are current clients of Scott and other mini storage facilities outside of our city. And so that leads me to believe the conclusion in my mind is that no storage facility is the same. So whether or not we have, okay, we've got plenty of restaurants, same, same idea. It's like, well, no, not all restaurants are the same. You know, same with, it's just my reasoning that I've been making. So the idea that we have, I guess, a lot of, maybe one can say a low vacancy rate compared to other cities that have maybe higher vacancy rates of storage units. So I've just been kind of looking at that and, and not necessarily thinking that we don't need another one as if it's the same as the other seven. So that was, I guess, one comment I wanted to make to the commission. And because it affects the idea of greenhouse gas emissions, if you have clients that are driving out of Tascadero because they don't want what we currently have, you know, it's a, it's a market issue there. So that's, that's why Scott wants to build it here. And then I guess the other thing was around, I keep hearing the comment that the mini storage isn't consistent with all the other amenities we have. We have the park, we have childcare, we have a church, we have residential. But I don't think that good planning has to be that it, it's the same thing located next to the same thing. And so I'm thinking about the this diversity of services that we're providing and having viable businesses. So to me, that's just another thing I've been thinking about. That the consistency of, oh, we don't have another thing like it. Well, that doesn't necessarily mean that, that means it's good planning. And then I've also just been considering if we deny the project and rezone or look at that. I mean, two years is the minimum is what Phil said. I, I believe it would probably take longer. And I'm surprised that the co-working spaces, even though that was something that got taken off the table due to the rezoning, that nobody really wants the community room, which is a community asset. I'm just kind of baffled by no comments about that have been made, but maybe that they just are like, nope, no to the mini storage, which includes the community room. We don't even want that. So I was, I was curious. If it gets approved, it seems like we would want the community room for the community asset. So I guess that's it for me right now.
Dennis, we'll go to you.
Um, I'm, want to ask a question about the appeal process. Is there a fee that needs to be filed for an appeal? And if I recall, the previous appeal was filed on behalf of the public by, by Roberta. Is that true?
There was a couple of different appeals filed. Now, if, if a city council member does indeed file an appeal, there is no fee required. And they can choose to do that on their own behalf, or if they feel there's a significant, you know, members of public, you know, want to appeal for, they can do that as well. But if there is an appeal filed by a private citizen, there is a fee. It's quite a big fee, what is it, 700 and?
It is $1,000, 1,084.
It's gone up, 1,084. So it's
That could be prohibitive for some people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of questions real quick. First, the last time it was rejected was because it didn't fit in with the character, incompatible with the character of the neighborhood. And I see the changes that they, they really haven't really addressed that, that issue because we have so many people who are objectionable, saying that it doesn't fit the character. And my, my question was, has anybody from Bordeaux Apartments shown opposition to this project?
I don't think we're sure if there's anybody from the apartment specifically with that address, we could double check on that. But back to that original questionnaire about character, the city's council's original determination on that wasn't just based on design, it was also based on general land use. Basically thinking, no matter how much you design something, it's the land use that doesn't seem to fit the character of this neighborhood, the use itself. I think that was brought into the equation.
Okay, and I think, I think, and the second
We have not seen, I, I, we don't know where some of the people that wrote in opposition, what their addresses are. But again, not the whole apartment area was noticed, only the small portion towards the street.
Well, I noticed that most of the objection was from the La Ploma area and Dove Creek. And I just thought that they may not have the need for storage as much as Bordeaux, considering that that's a place a lot of people land when they come to Tascadero, which would be a convenience for them. And I really liked the fact that Victoria brought forward that community room in that area might be a benefit to that community and that we might be missing out the opportunity to serve those, the people in that community. That's it. A lot to, a lot to take in. Sorry.
I have one more question. For staff. This might be more of a public works question. I know we don't have any public works here, but is there any sense of the use of public transport from this neighborhood, especially Bordeaux? I'm thinking, you know, are they high, high users of our public transportation? And do they have vehicles, use of vehicles and things like that?
My guess would be, yes, I think we do have a lot of ridership from the south end of town. But I don't have those exact statistics from public works. And, and I haven't seen what their parking situation looks like and how crowded their parking lots are. So I don't know.
And yeah, it's an assumption because the fact of a lot of our higher density zoning surrounds this area and is just north of this area adjacent to the state hospital. We've got multiple high density residential properties that are clustered together in the south end of town. So one would assume that your ridership is going to be way up in this vicinity and northward.
Tori?
I guess I, I just kind of have a comment after hearing Victoria. You know, obviously, we've all thought about this a lot. We're on our, what, sixth hour or something? But you know, one of the things that I've really been thinking about is sort of along with Victoria was saying, you know, market issues and whether, you know, markets will tell you whether you, you want more self-storage or not. But the thing with this building is, is that once it's built, I mean, that's, that's going to be it. So you know, hopefully it's successful if it's approved. But you know, I just try to think about in 10 years, 20 years, 25 years, are we still going to want a mini storage here in this section of land? You know, it's something I've really been thinking about and, and trying to think about the future of Tascadero. And it, and it's totally, you know, open. I mean, there's no right or wrong answer. You know, just, just kind of thinking about, about that and, and you know, if it's needed now, but is it needed in five or 10 or 15 years? And it, it's just another, another hard issue to think about when, when we're approving a project with this kind of scale and footprint. So.
I'd like to discuss the meeting room. And there was in the presentation of change, change of hours of occupancy of the room. Was it like from eight, 6 p.m.?
Yeah, I will share my presentation again, but listed in the condition of approval was the full facility hours from 6 a.m. to 9 p.m. or the applicants are okay with the reduced hours that coincide with the office component.
The reason why I note that is that I think that the, you know, questions that members have about the the use of that room. I think the hours for me would be prohibitive in that people are working. And to me, it seems like it would be more use at later hours versus during the day hours. That's just my thought. And so I'm wondering why the change of the hours by the applicant or the agreement to change the hours.
I, I just don't think that they envision it being used that way for evening time. I think they looked at it as being a more of a daytime use. But obviously, the benefits to the community to allow evening hours would be something to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Good point, Dennis. Yeah. I don't see six to eight a.m. being a use, but five to nine p.m. Yeah. Community groups.
I have a question with Cindy.
Yeah, Randy?
So of the areas that will be affected by this, I mean, if we're just going by the 300 foot rule, do we know how many individual addresses that would be affecting?
So the 300 foot rule is for legal noticing requirements. So it's how many people we are legally required to notice that doesn't necessarily define area of impact.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is a concentration volume of people who are of course chiming in on this. We have approximately what, 43, 44 people who chimed in on it? And I just was trying to get a realistic perspective as far as what percentage of people are those that are being realistically affected? Is it like 95% of them are like right next to it? Or are they?
Yeah, I mean, I, I I think we can tell you how many people were sent the notice. But I don't think we can statistically sort of draw the correlation between those who are noticed and those who commented because of course there are outreach efforts and people on our email list. And certainly, public comment extends far wider than our noticing range.
Exactly. I was just trying to see if I can get any clarity on that. Because if, you know, there's a bunch of people like you, like was brought up earlier, you know, someone saying, hey, this affects me way on the north end of town. And the realism is, are you really speaking for that neighborhood or not? So, okay.
I have a question. Kelly, can you go back to a slide that shows? I think it is a building B where the fence is going to come up to the building. Oh, E. Some of the renderings that we saw, we were talking about the Sagrarian style, but tonight we learned, at least this is the first time I heard it, that building E is actually a block wall there, and it's going to be right up against Via Camino. Is that right?
Yes, that is what the applicants presented. I can go to the elevations, which I know are small and difficult to see. And they're kind of behind a fence. So it is difficult to see. The elevation callouts on here show a ribbed metal siding and then use of block only as a retaining feature for the elevated pad.
But instead, it'll be, there will be an exposed split faced masonry wall and not a fence. And that's why I think we talked about adding vines to that. So would be a, I don't think we have a really good elevation of that side of the building as it's proposed today.
Of course, at the commission's discretion to add any conditions or material changes should you move in that direction.
Yeah. The other thing is we can, we can condition this to put in a large box sized trees, trees as well. So we don't, you know, we don't have.
Yes.
Because what we're seeing in the, in the architectural renderings are fully grown trees and full vegetation. And obviously, that wouldn't look like that when it was first constructed, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Dennis?
And following up on that, did I hear the applicant say that an option might be to move the building farther away to be able to retain the fence, but yet provide the landscaping?
Yes, they would have to do some site design work to ensure that they were still meeting turning radiuses, but that is definitely within the realm of possibility to shorten some buildings and relocate that building farther onto the site.
Keep in mind, when you do something like that, then you create a narrow gap between a fence and a building where there's no access. And, you know, that's only five foot wide, for example, that could become a problematic area. If it's 10 or 20 feet wide, maybe that's a suitable thing, but just to put a five foot slot just to get a wire fence out there, a different maybe that's a suitable thing, but just to put a five foot slot, just to get a wire fence out there or different fence out there. Will that change the aesthetic? You know, it's just just something to consider. And I think that's um just a general
Yeah.
general comment.
My concern is not having a fence could lead to now, once the bushes grow or whatever is there and and people can be behind those things. If without the fence. And so that's why I thought that.
Was there any other answer to be? Tori, did I see a hand over there?
Yeah, I think you said Victoria, not Tori.
Yeah.
Um, well, it was regards to the open easement. You know, two weeks ago, we put that in the condition that we have an open easement and Kelly had suggested that it not be in Plan A, you know, recommendation if we're going to approve it. And that we can add it if we want, but it wouldn't be just accepted that that's what we're going with again this time. And yeah, I had some mixed feelings about it and just wanted to bring it up to the fellow commissioners to see what you all thought. Maybe take a pulse on that because that 1.4 acres, I don't know if you can go to a map, Kelly, to show again what I'm talking about. But the, um, yeah, that triangle. You know, I heard a lot of comments tonight and two weeks ago about the need for a functional wetland and that it's not reasonable to have it be developed on and have it be a underground storage um for future development. So I'm caught though, because I did hear the agent speak to the fact that if they are allowed and you know, this, these are big ifs, because Army Corps still has to do studies and whatnot. That if they're allowed to build on that and retain the storm water underground with, you know, storage facility. That they'd want to do something with childcare. And that seemed like a usage that neighbors would like, probably even more so than the mini storage. But if we made a contingency that the open space easement shall be placed in the unused triangle portion again, then that won't even be on the table. So it's, it's not really talking about this mini storage, but it's it's related because if that's, if that's going to be in our motion tonight, if if someone puts that forward again, I'm just conflicted there. So.
Now, Steph, just if I can weigh in just on a couple items on that triangle, because it's, it is a challenging piece of property for one primary reason. And that's driveway access. It's going to be really difficult to get another access driveway onto El Camino. That's why the access driveway is on Via El Camino. Because you've got an arterial roadway there um with kind of narrow lane and high speed. And so a lot of design considerations and changes to that roadway would have to occur with the driveway access. So that is going to be somewhat prohibitive to anything happening on that property. Another comment I'd like to make to the commission is for consideration. If you were going to go with any kind of recommendation to support this project and you're going to put conditions on it, that open space condition also doesn't have to be an all or nothing. You could say, hey, a portion of it should be open space to preserve a 30, 40 foot setback from the creek area, for example, just throwing ideas out there for you that you know, I think the original thought of having to be open space has merit, but um if you, if I think that the thought came forward that the commission wanted to support the project and then preserve options for the applicant, there's other ideas that could come out of that as well, some all or nothing approach.
Yeah, I guess I can just empathize with if it was cut and it wasn't this all or nothing. How useful would point three, you know, be for development versus the 1.4? Um, so it's just yeah, it's just going back and forth with what to make use of that space. And I also see that the rural character and the the functional wetland is an important piece to the neighbors who spoke. So yeah, I'm still um a proponent of the open easement, even though now I'm I'm also just considering about other uses and the what ifs that come with that. So. Thoughts?
And Sarah, I'll mention that uh you can probably see this, but the applicant has been raising her hand and wants to speak up about something. It's your completely at your pleasure, whether or not you want to open up to allow the applicant to speak and weigh in on a topic. But you don't have to. So that again, it's completely up right now. Public comment is closed and you know, if there, if you think there's value to having the applicant weigh in or or answer additional questions, you can or cannot go there.
Thanks, Phil. Can can staff please speak to the um the setback requirements for the creek? Because we we heard that it was 20 20 feet from the top of bank in our uh general plan, but they were, they're showing 20 feet to the center line of the creek.
Our general plan has a policy that encourages a 30 foot setback from the top of a bank of a creek.
So our our general plan has 20 feet, uh, but the regional water quality control board and our approved lamp um requests 30 feet.
Thanks for clarifying that, Kelly. I I get those numbers intertwined all the time. So um definitely something, something to consider on this particular site. It is a creek. It is is considered a creek. So.
Yeah, we we also, I just Jeff, uh, more to that question. We don't know where their um top of bank will be based on hydrology with the newly realigned uh creek channel and um and how they're going to modify um that hydrology and and where that high watermark is going to sit. I believe that uh there is, let me see if I can find it. A potential for the retaining wall of this building actually to include some of the potential high watermark, although it could be here and the top of the bank would be at uh the meeting of the retaining wall on the slope. But we don't have hydrology information to let us know where that top of bank is at this time.
So it's top of bank and not high watermark.
Phil, do you have the exact general plan language?
Don't have that general language, but I can look it up in just a moment. So we can actually get that language, but let's go on to for some additional discussion while I um take a look at that.
Well, I was just wondering, Kelly, if you could also look at the that slide on the conditional use permits required findings for approval. Because that pretty much sums up the list of what we need to talk about. In my mind, so it's like the the rubric, right? I mean, there's lots of thoughts that we're having, but I'm like, are we capturing it all? And that's the slide that captures it all, I think.
We do, we do have the opportunity to um ask questions of the applicants represented. If you have any, we didn't, I, we didn't do that beforehand. Uh, so if anybody has any questions for the applicants representative, this would be a good time to to do that.
Well, I had that question about why more storage? When we have some low vacancy at the existing ones in the Tascadero and maybe she can speak to the market of why Scott wants to have this.
Uh, certainly through the chair. Scott had a market study done before he ever purchased the pro- property. Uh, just as he went in and talked with staff before he ever purchased the property. So he did his due diligence. And the woman who he had do that study basically told him that if he didn't want to do a storage project in a Tascadero that she would. Uh, she felt that at that point in time when she did her survey of the existing um area that there was a a high need for that. He also at his Moro Bay location, he does have several of a Tascadero clients up there who are would prefer to have storage in a Tascadero, but don't find the storage in the area to their their liking or to meet their needs. I don't have specific reasons why they choose to drive all the way to Moro Bay rather than store locally.
We did have, we did receive a letter from an individual here in Tascadero who did not find any of the current mini storages to her satisfaction and actually is in temp, using this mini storage in Templeton. So that seems like there are several that that do that.
Um, I I can speak a little bit on that. I did have a storage for a little while. I chose to have mine outside of the area due to um this area, you know, we're very um polar as far as temperature. So climate control is a big thing. So areas like Grover Beach, Moro Bay, they tend to be more self-regulating consistently in between 60 to 75 degrees. And it does reflect in costs. So I want to say last time that I looked at the storage cost, it wasn't that long ago. It was in between uh 180 to 20 for the size I was looking. And in Grover Beach and Moro Bay, you could find them for probably about 50, $60 cheaper. But I don't, I don't know fully if that's necessarily the direct reason why it would cost, but there is something there. There's a a good chunk.
I can also speak to that. I have storage in Templeton and I have storage in Templeton because the quality and the conditions of the storage area and the safety of the storage area. Um, there is just much better than anything I could find in a Tascadero.
I guess the other, oh, sorry.
Creeks. Do you want to hear about creeks real quick?
Sure, yes.
Let's do that. So actually, the general plan policy actually refers to ordinary high watermark for the measurement of a blue line creek um in terms of our interim setbacks. I will remind you, it also does say that um waterways in the city shall be maintained in a natural state and concrete channelization shall be prohibited. So a whole number of standards in there, but it does actually, when you talk about measurement of the 20 foot, it does talk about high watermark in terms of this type of creek.
Which is which is not that high.
Uh, in this location, uh, based on the amount of water that flows through there in the winter, I'm, I I don't know where that would end up, but I imagine that channel during certain times of year would have a decent amount of water in it.
Yeah, but with the floodplain next to it, I it would spread out.
Is some of that also being captured though, under the storage facility? So it's slowing it in that regard, or am I not thinking about that?
Yeah, the underground facilities would just be for um additional stormwater runoff generated um due to the development.
By the permeability. Okay. Okay.
I have a question.
Sorry, go ahead, Randy.
Quick question for staff. You mentioned the regional water control board. They had their own number as far as 30 feet and we had ours as 20. Do we supersede them? And this type of decision making?
Well, I mean, they're, they're the other estate agencies. So generally, they supersede us. Our lamp is a document describing our general standards. We don't quite know why 30 was put in there instead of 20. So it's not necessarily a regulatory document where it's wired, but it's a document where we stated um that we require 30 feet and that's the document they approved. Um, so it, we're a little bit gray area there.
Okay. And the reason I ask is a couple of years ago, Cambria, they had the, it was close to 750,000 to a million dollars in fine where the regional control board got, you know, they they occasionally do step in and they can hit pretty hard when they do. So I was just wondering if uh jurisdiction was a concern here at all.
So Kelly, you're saying that the 30 feet is actually included in our lamp?
Yes.
Okay.
The other, oh, sorry, Tori. I just had a question for Francis. I didn't know if we were still on that or no. So.
Sure. Ask Francis some question.
Well, it was just about the community room and if it, it sounds like you're proposing eight to five now, but did you, uh, did you at all think about the five to nine P M?
Um, through the chair, we never proposed hours of operation to be uh hours of access to be consistent with the community room. Uh, Scott had always, even when we were um proposing the co-working space, was going to provide staffing from eight to five. Uh, he doesn't staff the um mini storage facility after the hours of eight to five. So he would not be hiring and paying somebody to run a community room outside of the normal operations. And and as I said, when we have the co-working proposed, that was also proposed to be staffed and available from eight to five. So that was clear. That was just an oversight, a mistake that was made when assumptions were made. So that we weren't ever changing that. It was misstated uh just through accidental communication. Or miscommunication, as it were.
Okay.
I have a question for staff. Where was the proximity of the next parcel that could possibly be a mini storage to this end of town? And the reason I I asked that, and I just have, I have this nagging thing about all the high density um housing that we have down there and you know, maybe we're not meeting the needs of some of our underrepresented people. I haven't been trapped, you know, I haven't them have to trap, go so far to access.
Yeah, let me pull up um our zoning map real quick so like we can zoom out a little bit from the area. And share that with you. So this is um our zoning map of the south end of town. So here is the applicant's parcel in the public zone. This is our multi-family, high density, multi-family area here. And then we go to medium density, multi-family. So this commercial service zone here um allows for many storage use. Again, the public zone currently allows for it with conditional use permit. There's also in the Woodlands, uh, Luslamis specific plan, there's a parcel along Halcon Road adjacent to the railroad that was zoned to allow for uh mini storage use.
It's a corporation yard right now.
Yeah, it's being used as a contractor yard currently.
Dennis.
Uh, yeah, Victoria was kind of focusing a while back on the findings and I've been, I've been reading them. And in the staff report, it states that an additional finding is required to approve the realignment of the creek. The general, general plan requires a 20 foot setback from the ordinary high water mark. The existing ephemeral creek has been degraded due to drought and existing grazing over the last few years. The project includes realignment and restoration of the creek channel. The realignment uh will move the channel to accommodate the developed area and will not uh and will include natural, naturalized banks. If we decide that the that the realignment do the 20 foot uh setbacks or the 30 foot, as we were talking, that's in the lamp. We would not have to make this finding. Is that true?
Yeah. So if you condition the project um to, once their hydrology analysis was done and the ordinary high watermark was established to setback 20 or 30 feet from that. I don't, Phil, do you want to weigh in on whether the realignment itself requires that finding to be made?
Feels like it does because um you're taking an existing waterway that for all intents kind of has a natural course now and we're changing it. So yeah, it may have already been changed historically before, because obviously we built at some point, somebody built the highway one, 101, which is El Camino Real. And someone built Via El Camino and they put culverts below those areas in the areas where they felt best. And that probably realigned it at one time. But it's been in its current state for many, many, many years. And now again, we're moving something around. And so it's a strange situation. You're you're not following the setback standards. If we allowed some you're not following the setback standards. If we allowed someone to move the creek so they could follow the setback standards every single time, I mean, let's take, for example, a much more well-known creek, Atascadero Creek, and you say, well, I'm gonna move the creek over so I can develop my pad and now I'll still have a setback, but I pushed it over. Is that in compliance with those setback standards? My professional opinion would say, no, you are not in compliance. You're moving it over. You're asking for an exception. Here's the problem. We don't have a creek setback ordinance. Many cities have a creek setback ordinance that has a series of steps you go through to get an exception, to make modifications. You hire a biologist and you do all these things. In so many ways, this applicant has done that. They've hired a biologist, they've hired uh professionals for hydrology and they determined they can move it over. So in this particular case, the commission does have discretion to go there, but it is an interesting question. Now, it does make it challenging to follow this finding. Are we respecting all of these things? Um, it's, it is an interesting juxtaposition. So I, that is going to be one where I'm going to stand in the middle and I think the commission has to make the call on that one. It's a tough one, you know, and, and um it's not easy.
Uh, I want to um give an example. There was a piece of property at South Bay Boulevard and Highway one. It used to be farmed a long time ago and so Toral Creek was channelized along the base of the hills. And there was a project that was designed to create a uh managed wetland area. And I kept on offering to them, well, why don't you just cut the, cut the channel and let the water take its course? Ultimately, they saved about five hundred thousand dollars by doing that. And if you look at that area now, it's completely inundated with wetland uh species. And so uh in that particular case, there was a uh defined channel that was the course and it was modified by just plug, making a hole for it to go through. I kind of look at this area about the same, that uh, th- there isn't really a defined channel for this, for this water that goes through there. That's why part of it's defined ephemeral. Uh, there was a couple of pictures that were in the, in the presentation that was in our staff reports that show uh kind of a meandering uh waterway that's going through that area. So in my view, uh, to me, uh, they're showing right now that one picture that was shown by uh Kelly that had retaining walls on both sides, one on the property line on the triangle. Uh, to me, it seems like a similar situation could occur where uh the water that comes through the uh uh covert under El Camino Real can be allowed to wander on that triangle piece of property. I, I have actually another example. It's a uh Los Osos Valley Road and Foothill Boulevard where the, that exact same thing was done there. And the, the channel was just open for the water to take its course and go. And I believe that to be a good example that could occur here.
Yeah, and I do just want to clarify, um, certainly the water can take a different course once a pad is there, um, but the biologist's report did um specify that there, especially uh prior to the disking that recently happened on site, there, there is a defined uh creek channel um on the property today.
Yeah, it's pretty small. Anyhow, so um I I don't know where the chairperson wants to go with this. I'd like to move on uh with the project and um ready to make a motion so we can have a discussion about uh policies.
Okay, let's, let's say um have a motion, yes.
Um, I would like to make the same motion that uh was made previously. And I would incorporate the new, two new conditions that staff has provided to us in tonight's report within that motion.
Can you, I, maybe we can check in with um Stephen as well, but I'm not sure that we can simply state the motion that was made at the four twenty hearing. We might need to.
You need to restate the exact conditions you'd like to. And I think in our resolution that we have for you today, that's the one that staffs recommend need that you can, well, actually, we have two resolutions, one for approval, one for denial. If you're recommending approval and you want to make that motion, um you can go with the approval right resolution that staff has, or you could modify that resolution to add or delete conditions. So you need to clarify that. You said two conditions. I think we added three conditions to that particular resolution um from your previous resolution. So clarify that.
And those are added and then we had the change uh to the meeting hours and then the applicant um had requested the change to building E condition um to not require the greater setback. So I think we need some clarification on, on what you're including in your motion.
And fortunately, I have uh been going through the staff report all this time and I'm all over the place right now. Uh, there was a handout, there was an insert that you had in the staff report, probably within their first five or six pages.
So those were conditions that were already included in resolution A. I think it was uh the sewer easement condition for the ballards and the lighting and the hours of operation. Um, the applicant is requesting further modifications to the hours of operation and um they're also requesting changes to the condition twenty four relating to building E and the additional landscaping.
Could you please put up the uh, the motion that you have written in the report so I can see it? Um, looking more for the, the concept doctrine, resolution A, so to approve the conditional use permits, finding must be made to support the use permit uh and conditions may be added to enhance project's compatibility with the general plan and with the compatibility of the neighborhood. Uh, not very specific in my mind. I don't know if that would be adequate to get the discussion going. Uh, I would like to, uh, you had mentioned that the uh retention of the open space was not in resolution A. I would like to add that back into uh, resolution A. And then um as far as the uh applicant's desire to uh not have the meeting room, I would uh agree with the revised conditions in which the applicant had provided to how to, to remove the room and then to replace it with a conditioned uh storage area. Then I guess uh I'm undivided about building E in that, in the fence. Um, I'm seeing issues with that. Uh, but um I will include that the fence be put back to the corners of building E uh for discussion purposes.
Dennis, did you, did Dennis, did you have any specific, um, one of the things we have to do is make findings, those specific findings, did you uh?
Well, I read the, I've been reading the findings that have been provided for us and I.
Can you go back? Do you have a slide of those, Kelly, back on a previous slide? Didn't we have some?
I, I do have a slide. Um, the findings are included in draft resolution A with all facts that support those findings. And so um, the commission can adopt with those findings, uh, or you can modify any language as you see necessary, but you do not have to specify modified language if you don't want to and agree with that resolution A currently.
Again, I'm interested in getting this into a discussion and so I would make a motion to include those findings, all, all seven of them, if I recall, which would include uh kind of the uh, the realignment of the creek based on what Phil was talking about, kind of, it's kind of a gray area. They could be best to, to cover our bases by doing that, including it. But again, I think that there's a better solution to deal with that area than what is being proposed by the applicant.
What? Let's have some discussion about this uh, this motion. Anybody want to discuss that motion?
Well, I think in terms of the community room, that I think that, from what I heard, it was a little hard to hear it. Um, but I think I heard that the committee room would not be uh proposed anymore in the, in the motion he made, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I did hear Randy comment about just the climates and the differences of why people want to be outside of Atascadero, Grover, Moro Bay, for example. And so that, that might be a better use of a conditioned storage area. It's not going to be the full storage area, but for historic documents, line, you know, all these things of why people would want a conditioned storage unit space that's special. So I'm not necessarily thinking that wouldn't be as good a use, especially with the eight to five being the only way it could happen versus five to nine for community rooms. It's not going to happen, so I can, I can get behind that, I think.
A little discussion. Jason?
Uh, did we make any determination to put any restrictions on that triangle area?
It includes an open space.
So, okay.
Correct.
That's maintain, no, no changes to that, okay.
And if we're going to eliminate the community room, I would like to see the additional parking spaces to have the landscaping added there, additional landscaping.
Motion maker agrees.
Any other comments?
Well, I wondered if any of our commissioners thought about what Phil brought up to us, which was not to recommend anything, but he made the comment that the open space easement didn't have to be all or nothing. So I'm just curious about how people felt about that.
To me, that's more of a discussion item at this point, but um I think his other comments about um it being accessible is uh problematic in the sense that uh, to me, uh although it's not prohibitive, there would have to be some type of turning movements into that triangle that would be off the two-lane road or the, the four-lane road right now, the two lanes on that particular side for uh it to be safe. Uh, and that could eat up a bunch of room to do that, but uh I not in support of putting uh any use there uh for any, any reasons except for open space and to um address concerns uh about watersheds that have been expressed. And I do think that a, a nice feature could be created very simply. I mean, again, repairing areas uh take off by themselves. You introduce the water, it goes. And so I think that that would be a, a, a nice way of preserving or offsetting uh the finding seven about realigning or uh the creek, if that's the way we're, you know, looking at it. Uh, to me, like Phil was saying, there's a, there's a, uh, there's two sides to every issue. And to me, um, I can offset some of the concerns for the realigning of the creek by saying, okay, I'm going to make a a flood, a flood, uh, floodway or floodplain on this one side for the water to meander into and take its course.
So one, one comment on that is that we're looking at this as the water is going to go into the triangle space, but uh, there's a house there right on the other side of that. There's no like border on the triangle space that's gonna separate the water from going across to other property lines, is there?
There's, the sewer easement is there and I believe that's raised.
Is that raised, Phil?
Their, their current plan shows a portion of that uh adjacent to the creek channel to be raised. Um, I'm not sure if they were proposing any grading in the triangle portion um that would offset the sewer easement from the level um of the rest of the triangle area. Having said that, um, with the FEMA remapping, um, likely if they need it, some of that area will be depressed uh down to accommodate water flows as they would not be able to affect flooding on the adjacent property. So I think through that process, um, if that area gives the water, they would be required to do some grading.
Okay.
Well, right now they have a retaining wall in that property line between the two pieces that they're showing. So I, I'm not an advocate for the retaining wall, but they could uh put a berm closer to uh the, the home in that area to protect it from uh any levels that would uh, that area would get, get to. And again, it's, I don't think it's going to be that high, the, the, the high water level in that area, but um, again, that's something that can be designed.
Yeah, I mean, I think that a lot of this discussion about the water and the creek is going to be um, you know, the FEMA and the Army Corps of Engineers and the hydrology report is going to tell us exactly what they can and can't do with the creek water. Um, and we probably just need to decide if uh they can realign the creek to where they want to put it right now, if they can use those concrete um, the concrete channel, you know, if we want to allow them to use those, or if we're just gonna say, no, you can't use those. Um, but I think that um, you know, I don't even know if, we'll see what the hydrology report and everything says, but I, I imagine that will have a lot to say on what they can do with that chunk of land.
Yeah, I, there is no concrete, there's no line channel there. Again, they have retaining walls on the side to hold it, hold it in horizontally, not vertically. But um, I think staff has presented what the real issue is, and that is the, the flow of water after it leaves the property. Is it increased? Yes or no? Uh, with the things that they're doing with the stormwater uh facilities below the storm, be below the uh uh project site, a lot of the uh flows that would be coming off the impervious area that would potentially increase what's going out the door is going to be taken care of with that. Uh, to me, it's, I'm kind of looking at this as kind of an aesthetic thing. And uh, again, to try to preserve as natural as that, that area can be without using uh retaining walls and stuff, the whole things in. And that would also include the the setback from uh the property or the, the building side, you know, move that out farther into that triangle than hugging the area that it is right now. Anyhow, I'm still looking, I'd like to get this into a discussion and we need a second motion. Second to the motion to be able to move forward without, we're kind of going too far right now.
If I may energize, I think it might be a good idea of, of Kelly or Phil, just summarize the state of the motion at this time before we move to a second.
Thank you.
Well said. Thanks, Kelly. You got that?
I think I do, but correct me if I'm wrong. So we have a, a motion to adopt resolution A to approve the mini storage project, um adding a condition to require an open space easement over the triangle portion of the lot. Um, eliminating the meeting room from the plan, which would delete condition twenty and revise condition twenty-two to eliminate the hours of operation for the meeting room. Um, and revise condition twenty-four as proposed by the uh applicant related to building E. Um, and then the motion was amended to reduce the parking and add additional landscaping by the building.
Correct.
Okay, can I get a second from somebody? Okay, can I get a second from somebody? Jennifer, second. And that we have had a first and a second. We do a roll call, please. You're you're muted, isn't it?
Oh, Dennis has his hand raised. Okay.
I'd like to enter into a discussion, please. And that is about the whole discuss, the whole thing about gateway. Uh there were a lot of comments made about building massing, what I find kind of interesting is the bur- burdo apartments across the street. Are are massive. In comparison to anything else in that area, and then there's no comparison being made to. The massing over there and compared to what's on this project. I. There was a comment made by uh the planning director about kind of the domino effect, what might happen later on. And I, what I wanna say is that. There's two, there's always two, two ways on on a street. And just as much as you can say if this could lead to more mini storage. You could also say that this, this project is beautiful, and it's gonna set a standard. That everyone else is going to have to follow if they do put many storage out there, and it's the same thing that we dealt with. Uh on the commercial area of the Dove Creek project, whatever happens there is gonna be the standard. For the city as you come down Santa Barbara Road. All the commercial properties on the right hand side are gonna be influenced by that. So this, this whole area is designated for huge change. And especially on the other project down the street. We were told in so many words last week that there is a pr- an approved project there. That uh. The owners of the property could conform to. And that project would substantially change the rural feel of this particular area, and that will then continue. As you go down the street. I look at this project as setting a high, high standard for other people to have to follow. In this particular area, and that is for me, what's important about it and how it's going to uh influence. Gateway appearances in this particular area, so.
I would like to add to your comment because you did say the meeting last week, and so I just wanna clarify that was the DRC, and we were discussing the Dove Creek.
I'm sorry, you're correct, yes, that is correct. The Dove Creek Commercial Center.
Like to make a. Statement on that. I'm quite torn about this my myself. Because I would probably be in the same position as the homeowners over there. Being opposed to this particular development. On the other hand, I also am. Concerned about um how our underserved community is is also treated. We haven't heard. As far as I know, we haven't heard from anybody in any of the high density residential, maybe they feel like they can't speak on it because they don't. Own property here, but they do live here and they do add to our community, and I'm a little concerned. You know, that we don't, first don't hear from them, and that um maybe some of the decisions that we make here. Uh might have an adverse effect on on them as well. So I'm a little concerned about that, but I'm also concerned about property owners, and and I've I've heard, we've heard from multiple of them about. Potential of their home prices decreasing, uh personally, I don't see that happening, I. Haven't seen any houses go down in value in in our area for a long time. So I'm not sure that that's an issue, really for me, the. The key issue is in this binding. You know, is it consistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood? If all we look at is the houses, then maybe not, but if we also look at the high density residential, maybe it is. So we kind of have to weigh those things as well. We'll go with Randy first, then Tori.
All right, uh just permission to speak real quick on this, um this is kind of a really hard one because we talk about. Setting the example of what's expected of the other people, but ultimately, we do have to deviate to the section the best that we can of the black and white of essentially operating within our confines of. How is this really designated? And the complication of all this is when we bring in conditional, conditional in itself, maybe. Good, maybe not as far as for whether it's truly intended for that purpose. And I I do agree with you on the concern of. A potential community that could be underserved, and and it is something that I'm kind of wondering on this as far as the aspect of. Uh one, what the general cost would be for this facility, I mean, it is not gonna be cheap to bring this forward, and there's no way to say that this is gonna be. Renting below, but that's all hypothetical, right? So it's, it's really hard for me to go too far in the weeds there. So I start going back to what are the nuts and bolts of our of our general plan, so I'm just gonna go just over my short section, uh just kind of where. Where I'm feeling at on this, so. Proposed project number one, uh use is consistent with the general plan. If it was fully consistent, we wouldn't be having this conversation, it'd be pretty much a shotgun through, um but we are trying to entertain the idea of conditional and. It a property owner, we want property rights here, and that's what's kind of like stabbing me in, you know, like the kidney going, God, I I wanna allow this to go through, right? So the proposed project uh or use satisfies all applicable provisions to this title and establishes a subsequent operation or conduct. Of the use will not, because of the circumstances, conditions applied in the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the general public persons residing or working in the neighborhood of. Use, or be detrimental or de- or injurious to properties or improvements of the vicinity of use. That one's hard because we do have people that are arguing, saying, hey, uh according to, you know, so so many people who are in real estate, that there's that ten percent drop. I I understand people advocating there, um but there's two sides on that coin, um the part, as part, as far as the concern of. Injurious, I mean, we kind of had that discussion over the path before with whether with the poll or draft, but I'll just kind of get past that. The proposed project or use will not, will not be inconsistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood. That's a hard one for me, because we haven't really defined necessarily what defines the neighborhood a- as this aspect, you know, something I tried to reflect upon. But when I'm getting this much contact from that neighborhood. And about eighty percent of it is like negative, I'm trying to at least respond to them. The proposed project user project will not generate a volume of traffic beyond safe capacity, I think we know that this is, in this aspect, it would be better. Than apartments, but of all roads, access points either existing or to be improved in conjunction with a product or beyond normal traffic. Lines of the surrounding neighborhoods that would result from full development in accordance of the way and use element, now going to the way and use element. There's a lot in there that kind of is a little bit of the gray, um one thing they mentioned preserving residential neighborhoods. And essentially, if the neighborhood's reaching out, I do wanna listen to them. And I don't wanna necessarily feel like they fall on deaf ears, another concern I like to bring on this is. Is it considered sensible growth? And another thing is the verbiage on this, as far as our goals were oriented, is to preserve. The contour of hills and topography, at what point of modification are we going from preserve to altering? I mean, there, there's a fine line there, um. The other aspect that I would like to kind of um. Just kind of bring up here is. When it comes to preserving the ranch of residential neighborhoods. I I I've gotta go back to my education on here of like the broken windows theory, where one neighbor cares enough about something else. We go as far as, like if someone has a broken window, the neighbor goes, hey, you should fix that, it's reflective of the whole neighborhood. And I feel like that's what's happening here, the public is reaching out for us, and these are just things that I just wanna bring up, because as I read just through all these bullet points. There are things that are raised that are conflictual, so we're getting to a point where we're going conditional of conditional of conditional, and it's kind of a slippery slope. I just wanted to voice my opinion on that, so.
Thank you.
Um kind of, kind of going along with Randy, uh some of the comments I thought were interesting tonight, we heard a little bit less about. Uh water use and open space use and more about this isn't the use. At this spot, and that's kind of what I've been thinking about is, yes, it would take a couple of years, but. Um you know, this spot has potential for other uses. I I know that it needs to be developed for, you know, advancement of of Atascadero, it is the gateway, it's open land, it should be developed. And I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't need more mini storage or high quality mini storage, my thought is just. Does the mini storage go in this particular property? Um we just learned that they zone mini storage up the street a little bit, uh it's used as a contract yard right now, but. Uh again, it has that potential. And there's also the public use up by Del Rio, which is a flat piece of land, which could potentially be. You know, mini storage within the city as well, and honestly, I, even though the neighborhood is similar. It's different enough that I could see mini storage going there more than. Putting it on center stage where it would be here, and so that's just what I've been kind of thinking about is. You know, is it, it's that really that number four that that really um. You know. That really. Makes me think, because the city council already found that the project was not consistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood. So has it changed enough, the design changed, and the design is beautiful, I I mean, you can't argue with that, it is a beautiful building. But the overall functionality of it has not changed, and while I think that. It would be interesting to hear from our underserved, this is a class A facility, and I don't know if this particular facility. Would. Service. That same group of people, um. You know, I don't know, I don't have a storage facility, I use my garage, I'm sitting in my garage right now, that's my office space. Uh which I was killing a wasp earlier, that's why I look like a crazy person, uh I was being attacked viciously. But, you know, that's really what I think about is just. Does a mini storage belong in this particular space in town, and. Um you know, that's really just what I've been been struggling with, so that's my two cents.
Uh well, good to Dennis and Randy.
I'd like to ask a question to staff, is what is the classification of Vio Camino, is it a. Residential street, or is it not?
It's a, I believe it's a collector.
And and how is a collector defined?
Well, there's, we've got, let's just go through the the classifications of streets, you've got. But rural, local. Uh collector, and then arterial, you know, essentially, in so many ways, there's probably one more in there. So. A collector collects streets from the local streets, you know, collects traffic from the local streets. And pours them onto an arterial, so it's kind of in between one of those classifications.
So it is.
That's what I'm assuming that road is, I don't know the exact classification of Vio Camino, I can tell you the classification of El Camino, obviously, is an arterial.
It's a collector street, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I live on.
Feels like a collector, yeah.
I live on San Rosa, and it's a collector.
Yeah.
And that goes through neighborhoods the entire length. Uh so to me, uh when I, when I think that the road is designed. Not to be a residential road, it's designed for other, it's it's designed to hold different capacities than what would be a local street. And uh again.
I do have the exact definition, if you want it.
Yeah, please.
Um so collectors channel traffic from residential or commercial areas to arterial streets. Residences, commercial or public activities typically front on them. They're usually two lane streets, and maximum acceptable volumes are often dictated by resident concerns about intrusion. Rather than traffic capacity considerations, collectors are further defined as urban, rural, or hillside, depending on the area. Um I don't know if the, my guess is this one is an urban collector, just because it doesn't have topography. Um but that bridge may limit. How it's classified.
Yeah, I did wondering if we have any rural roads within our city limits, we are an urban area.
Most of our roads are classified as rural, local roads.
Okay, well, again, uh this road is always going to have. Travel on it, gonna be greater than it is. The offerings by the people who have spoke have to have something else. Uh besides this is gonna generate much, much, much greater traffic than this particular facility. Again, compatibility for me, especially where I live, is I want people driving past my house at twenty-five miles an hour, not fifty. That's compatible. And uh this particular facility is not going to create a high, high traffic volume at all. And then I'm also always kind of surprised by people like at, what's the Los Lomas project up there who are speaking on behalf of this. I mean, if anything is not compatible with the surrounding, it's Los Lomas, that used to be a. Uh oak woodland area with no houses on it, and now it's covered with houses and apartments. That is not compatible. Uh we were talking about, Randy was talking about policies earlier. We have lots of policies about how we have our streets and do ours, and how we're supposed to be act- uh acting on them. But uh we're not following any of those policies when it comes to things that we wanna do within the community. And so there are a lot of gives and takes within the general plan, there's nothing emphatic about it, it's meant, it's not meant to be static. It's meant to be uh to be our, uh to be played, to be molded and played with over time, because things do change. And things do happen, so I just wish that the fellow commissioners would consider those thoughts, thank you.
Um I just wanted to kind of add on to what Tori was saying, I mean, I, as much as I do wanna make sure that, you know, an underserved community can benefit from this. The realism is, is it's gonna be a really nice facility. There's a big thing that I feel is an elephant in the room here, in that there is a dangerous form of thinking here, um you know. Francis Romero brought up, these, you know, all these uses are already permissible, like if they did AVNC, right, which could generate more traffic. But the contingency is, the plan says, okay with that, go ahead, go forward with it, so we're down the other pathway. Now we're at a point where we're going, well, the community can get this, and this, and this, and this, and that's a very dangerous thing, way of thinking to think, like, oh, well. We're setting this standard, you know, essentially, this is a property owner, they have certain confines that they operate in, and it's kind of scary to see. Us going the route of like, okay, we can get this, 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 I wouldn't necessarily say it's like extorting, but it is, it doesn't set a good precedent. That, you know, someone might feel like this is the golden, golden ticket item that they, that we have to do in the future. I mean, ultimately, that that in itself would disincentivize me from wanting to invest in the community. So I just wanted to point out that I I understand that Scott is bending over backwards on a lot of things. And had it have been anything else, like that wasn't under conditional, I mean. Should have been a million miles ahead already on it, so I I just wanna make sure that, you know, I'm not trying to be negative on it, I just wanna make sure that we also notice. I mean, a lot of something is doing, in theory, should actually be optional, I mean, we're, we wanna talk about walls and fences on this. The thing is, is the neighborhood right across the street, they've got a huge wall already, and we're concerned about a wall there. And so there are some things where it's like, it seems like. It's just been dangerous thinking, and I just, I I want to let it be known that I do understand that Scott has went through. Hence, many ways more than he should have on on some of this. Sorry about that.
I would just like to say, the the reason that this was denied last time was because, again, I bring up the character of the neighborhood. And I believe that there is a lot of. Uh people who are. Uh I, you know, upset that the character of the neighborhood is gonna be affected, and I think that that's. They're not really thinking long term, as something's gonna eventually go there. Um and the neighborhood does have a voice, but we're looking at the high density housing that is right next door. All that area, and I don't see any. Any issues that are being written, brought up through those houses, who would probably benefit more from this project. So when you're looking at public use, and we're looking at, who wants, how's it gonna serve the community? I think that that's a really, really nice little area, it's got the park, it's got those residential areas. Putting this project in with the the landscaping will probably add to that, and it may not be realized till after. After it's built, so um. I'm ready to to continue, it's getting late.
Jennifer.
Yeah, I'm I'm also really torn, I mean, I.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also really torn. I mean, I like Tori, I, I sit back and think like in 20 years, is that what we want there? Um, and, and recognize that it is conditional and, um, hear the voices of all of the people that are writing in all of these letters. At the same time, um, you know, architectural standard is really high. I mean, of course, personally, I would love to have it there. And I understand that there's a huge need in our community. Not just from, um, people that are in apartments and underserved people that don't have a lot of storage space, but also from small, small business owners. You know, there are a lot of small business people that can't find small spaces to rent that need additional storage space for their businesses. So there's that aspect of it as well. So it, it's a really hard call, but I do, you know, so there, there's both sides of it. I'm, I'm really torn, but I feel like, I feel like, um, I feel like they've gone above and beyond with this, um, you know? Um, and, you know, in presenting this and have, um, yeah, I don't know. I'm torn. I'm really torn. Um, I feel like the mitigations that are in place outweigh the, um, the negative aspects of the project. For a man. I think there's more benefit than there are negatives to the project. It's just where I'm at.
Jennifer, it sounds, looks like we've heard from everybody. So unless anybody wants to make any additional comments, we'll turn it to a net to do a roll call.
Okay. Can I hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a first by Commissioner Schmidt and a second by Commissioner McIntyre. Uh, Commissioner Anderson.
Hi.
Commissioner Carranza.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes.
No.
Vice Chairperson King.
No.
Chairperson Brandon Ickoff.
We hear from everybody before me.
Sorry, what was that?
Oh, yeah. Chair needs to be last. So we'll go on to, um, who else do you have? Oh.
I got everyone except for.
Oh, yeah. That's right. We had motion in second. Okay. That's right.
So Jeff?
No.
No? So that's, uh, four to three with four yeses and three no's. So motion passes.
Okay. We got there. Yeah. Four is a
Form.
Successful motion.
Yeah.
Concluding that.
Thank you, everybody. Um, for your comments and your, your work in this. Appreciate it. And wish them the best in their, their project. We will now move on to the amendments to Title Nine of the Tascadero municipal code. Uh, who's got that?
I think Phil and I are gonna team up.
Yeah, Mariah and I will, will be talking about our annual update to the zoning code. So if I take a deep breath, everyone stretch their arms for a moment.
I don't know, Phil. Are you sure you want to follow that?
I know. So this is kind of a, this is a tough, um, discussion coming up too. It's not light. There's a little bit to discuss here, but you know what? We can do this. We can get through this. I don't know if you need a five minute break or if you've had dinner yet. Um, I don't want to be here all night. I'm, I'm gonna try and pull this through. Is this okay with everyone? Can we proceed?
That's why I was late. I was distracted by tacos. So please go on.
Let's do it. We're gonna go on.
We need to do ex parte.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, let's ex parte on this item. Jason?
And let me see.
None.
Through my screen.
Dennis?
No ex parte.
Jennifer? Tori?
No.
Victoria? Victoria? Uh, any ex parte on this?
Sorry, I'm blaming, I'm, uh, blaming on my husband. He's, he's having to move himself to wake up at four in the morning. I might need to move my office. Can you repeat the question?
Any ex parte on this item?
No.
Okay, Randy?
No.
None for me either. Okay, we'll turn it over to Mariah.
All right. And I'm gonna, if both of us are gonna present, I'll try and share my screen, Ryan. Let me see if it'll, um, if it'll go. All right. Are, are the, uh, are we looking at the right presentation there, Commissioner?
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Mariah. Um, let me start the actual slideshow, see if that changes anything. Could it get going? Boy, my computer is going slow. Shoot, are we still looking at the same presentation there in a presentation mode?
Um, it's in a presenter mode, maybe.
Oh, I'm on the wrong screen then. Let's just try and get out of here. Hang on just a second. Bear with me just a moment here. Let's see. Move this over to the other screen. My mouse is working really slow. So bear with me just a moment. Battery must be getting tired on me. I'll get this going.
You need to energize a plenty.
Yeah. All right. Now I've lost my, let's see. Let's try that again. Oh, one more time. Let's try that. And turn this back on. All right. Is that the right one?
It's good.
Okay, finally. Oh, my gosh. I had to swap everything around here a little bit. Mariah, you want to start us off and then I'll proceed?
Um, sure. So yeah, this is our, um, annual Title Nine zoning text amendment update. Basically just to be consistent with, um, current policies and, uh, and make sure that we're cleaning our code up as we're finding inconsistencies when we go through. Yeah.
And, uh, we did bring a preliminary list of what we're gonna do to the city council and every year we have a whole, we have a big list of things we need to take care of. Some of these were from our housing element that was recently adopted. Some of these are just to streamline our code and make things easier to read. Anyway, city council went through a big list of things that we were proposing. They narrowed that down. They prioritized some of those items. And, um, what we have for you tonight is that smaller list. There will be other amendments that will bring, um, later on, um, because there are other things to do. But tonight, with no further ado, let's get on with it on some of these topics. The three big topic areas are implementing the housing element, the streamlining standards, and really just kind of fixing some inconsistencies in there. Let's just jump right into it. So, Mariah, let's talk about, um, the ag use. This one, it came straight out of our housing element. When we wrote our housing element this past year, it was discovered that the state has this employee housing act, which requires that anytime you've got an agricultural use out in a residential zone, it mandates that you allow housing for farm workers. Well, our city, our area is not set up for that. We don't want high density housing all over the west side in wildfire areas and areas that don't have sewer services. So we need to change our zoning to really describe where these agricultural uses are, what they are, um, and change some specifics on that. This amendment just takes away all of the ag lane uses from the list of allowed uses in residential zones. Now that might shock you and say, well, what about all these hobby act we have? And we have people that grow, uh, wine grapes. And we have people that grow lavender. We have people that do 4H projects and other, you know, they have, you know, small ag products and they have, they raise sheep and lamb and all these things. None of that will change. We're simply redefining that as an accessory use in our residential districts. So you can still continue to do all of those same things in a residential neighborhood. But we don't classify them anymore as residential uses. This is a significant amendment in our zoning that needs to happen based on our housing element of our general plan, needs to happen, uh, to get us consistent with that state code. Anything you want to add on that, Mariah?
Um, just that this is actually clarifying. We get a lot of questions from, you know, people on smaller properties who want to do ag as a small business and it's been really unclear in the code, um, when we're looking to direct them on how to do that. So we did add some language to clarify that people can do these small agricultural businesses, um, under the home occupation uh, rules, as long as they still fit within the residential, um, feel and they're not becoming a, a big commercial ag. So that's just another thing we clarified. And then, um, our, our farm animal section, it, it was, uh, I think it kind of allowed for really large scale animal farms. I haven't seen any since I've been here. But we just took out that provision completely for these large, um, I think chicken ranches and hog ranches and stuff, because they just, uh, I don't think there's probably anywhere in the city. They're really appropriate.
Those are leftover things that were left in our zoning code from our prior days before city incorporation, where we did probably have some really large hog ranches, big beef farms. Uh, now all these things are really smaller in nature and they're hobby in nature. Anyway, kind of a big deal. Now the state has required that we have these residential farm worker housing areas in these areas. And our residential zone is not designed to be an ag zone. It's designed to be a rural residential zone with ag uses. This amendment really clarifies that. So we're gonna go through each of these amendments and tell you a little bit about them. We can also refer to the text. Uh, but we're gonna try and keep this as simple as possible. Another one that came out of our, our housing element is building height. Right now in our multi-family districts, our code, uh, says that development's limited to two stories. Can't tell you how many times people have requested exceptions to that where you've got a parking space below a unit and then you have two living stories of, of, of bedroom space or, or interior space. And it's limited to 30 feet, which doesn't allow for that architectural interest, doesn't allow for the density that we need to try and reach in our multi-family zones. So that was really identified as a, uh, an impediment to housing production, especially trying to meet our, our minimum densities. So this amendment gets rid of the two stories. So you can now do three stories, for example. Uh, and also increases the height limit up to 35, but also puts in a provision so that we get this step sort of wedding cake style building height. So anything up to 25 feet in height on that building still has this five foot setback as you get up to 35 feet and get up over 25 feet, an additional five foot. So for that taller portion of the building, there would be an additional step back requirement. Right now our code doesn't have that provision built in, but essentially this makes it a lot more flexible. At the same time, it gives us some more design enhancement for taller buildings. And then if they really need to go taller up to 40 feet for architectural features to encourage like quality in architectural form, they can do that as well. Wouldn't have to go to the planning commissioner for that. It'd be an administrative use permit improvement. This one, number three, really simple. It's simply just listing the actual density in our commercial districts. Right now we allow mixed use projects in our commercial retail zones. In our other commercial zones, but nowhere in our zoning code can you find a number of units you can have per acre. It is listed, uh, out in our housing element. This just publishes it into the zoning code. It was left out. This is a real simple fix. Again, it was something that was brought up by our housing element. So this one shifts into streamlining a little bit. We talked about that upfront, one of the three categories. This is the second category. Um, and in fact, we might have a couple of these coming to our next planning commission hearing. We've done a lot of these in the past where we look at accessory structures that are over half the size of the, of the residence on the property. A lot of times, these aren't a big enough deal to bring the commission. There's been a discussion for years to try and do something different. So this amendment would add design standards for larger accessory structures while reducing the number of units that come through this conditional use permit process. So with this one, we would basically allow an accessory structure to be up to the size of the house, up to 100% of that size of that primary structure. And not have to go for a conditional use permit as long as they comply with certain standards, height, setback, lot coverage. Um, and also meeting qualifiers such as being built behind a primary house, being built on a conforming lot. Now you could still exceed that with an administrative use permit, but not having to go through a conditional use permit process. We didn't feel that these types of exceptions rose to that level. Now, some of the design parameters that we're suggesting that these units comply with each time would be that, again, they're not between the house and the street. They're compatible with the pattern of development in neighborhood. We've heard that, that line somewhere before, haven't we? Uh, that they are compatible or complementary with the architectural style of the primary structure. And that, um, there's, you know, at least equal to or less than if the primary structure on a conforming lot, what does that mean? Conforming lot? Conforming lot means that the lot that they're on is in conformance with the zoning standards in terms of its size, in terms of its width, in terms of its depth. We have a lot of non-conforming lots that are really tiny where these things might make a big impact. So in those particular cases, they are gonna have to come through an exception process. Anyway, again, going on with that list, there's not substantial rain required, not removal of significant native trees, and it doesn't block the solar access or sunlight to that, to an adjacent property. So again, that's the accessory structures. Uh, this would streamline our review process and put in, uh, pre-accepted design standards. Here's another one that the city council suggested we move forward with. Right now we have a little loophole in our code. Uh, we only, um, allow up to 200 square feet of what we call scrap and junk, which is just miscellaneous garbage on a property. But there's a strange exclusion in the code that if that junk and scrap is surrounded by a six foot fence, then there's no limit at all. You can have acres and acres of stuff. And there's nothing about it being invisible to adjacent properties or the right of way or anything else. Not that we have a lot of these issues in the city, but we just want to have an opportunity to enforce them. Should we have these issues? So this one would limit the maximum area of outdoor storage to 200 square feet when unscreened, still like the existing code. But then would also allow it to a thousand square feet of stuff when it's completely screened from neighboring properties or from the public right of way, but not an unlimited amount. So just raining that in, if we needed to enforce that at some point in the future. We're not targeting specific properties right now. We don't have it. But if we were to receive a substantial level of complaints and we have to go out after a property, this gives us that tool, adds another tool to our, our toolbox. Uh, this is a good one. Fencing and wall height standards. We've had a couple of projects recently that have challenged us on this particular aspect. And right now, we don't have a limit to the height of a retaining wall. We do have fence height limits, but many times a retaining wall has to have a barrier on top and they're also close to a property line. And we might end up with an eight, 10, 12 foot retaining wall with a five, six foot barrier on top, which is essentially this visual barrier or wall that might be 12 to 14 feet tall. That was never the intent of our code, but again, it's a loophole that we want to try and, and close. You want to, I'll let you chime in a little bit, Mariah, so my voice doesn't get tired. Do you want to talk about how this amendment would work?
Yeah. So this clarifies how, um, the amendment clarifies how fences are or walls are, um, calculated when there's an uneven surface. Um, basically this would set the maximum, uh, to eight feet. So you could have two feet of, of retaining wall and a six foot fence on top of it. Um, and then if it's separated by five feet of horizontal space, which you can see there, then it would count as two um, separate fences. So it wouldn't be the overall height you'd now be looking at two, um, different fences. Yeah, I think that's all.
Yeah. So basically we're, we're wanting to set the maximum height of the wall at eight feet or a wall combined with a fence at eight feet, unless we're separated by five feet of horizontal space. So it would add that landscape area to it. So yeah, that's pretty pretty straightforward. There still would be an exception process where you can get additional height through an administrative use permit where the terracing is not achievable or there's other issues on the property. This one has come up a lot too. Covered parking for multi-family residential. Right now our code doesn't require any covered parking for single family homes. This one has come up a lot too. Covered parking for multi-family residential. Right now, our code doesn't require any covered parking for single-family homes. They can put all their parking outside. They do have to have parking, but in multi-family apartments, our code says that um half, about half of parking is required to be covered. What we're looking for here, and this just came from our housing element and this came from discussion from developers, is we're looking for more flexibility to provide an option. Not require covered parking, but if they want to do covered parking, great. Um if it's part of the design review process, great. But what we don't want to end up with is where parking, covered parking ends up a have-to and it ends up an afterthought and ends up creating a poorly designed carport on a property that never was intended for it. And it also can take away from landscaping. It can take away from logical design. So this would remove that exclusion in the code and and give us some more latitude in that area. This next one's about lane use a little bit. Right now, mortuary services. And when we talk about mortuary services, we talk about crematory. Right now, they're in allowed use in our commercial retail zones and commercial service zoning districts. They're not allowed wherever in an industrial zone or some of our more intensive zones. Where they should be allowed. So this is just a bit of a cleanup saying that in um the commercial retail zone or service zones, they should actually be a conditionally allowing use. Maybe they're okay. Sometimes maybe they're not. Depends whether it's a crematory or not. And then adding them as an allowed use to the industrial zone where that might be a more appropriate use. We talk about the services of a crematory and things like that. So a real basic land use um modification. Gates, a good topic we often come to with the design review. This is one that we consistently have a problem with in our public works department. Constantly weighs in on where we have gates that are built right at the edge of the street and there's not enough room for a vehicle to pull in and have that gate open. And it creates safety hazards. So we're wanting to add a twenty-foot setback for gates on a driveway so that there's space to pull a vehicle off the road when that gate is being operated. And then we also want to clarify that there should be a height limit to gates. Gates are different than a fence. So right now, fences in the city have a six-foot height limit. Gates oftentimes have features and things that are a little different. Obviously, they're much smaller um area that they take up. So we're wanting to add that height limit clarification of twelve foot. And make sure also that they comply with um emergency access standards and that they don't open out towards the street. So these are some common sense logical suggestions in our code. This one's another one too that has come up recently with design review. This came up especially recently during COVID when a lot of projects went into a much longer extended period and did not get built. We've got projects that have been sitting with a designer view committee endorsement uh for several years and haven't been built. When does that expire? It's left us baffled with that discussion because there's nothing in our code about an expiration date. Well, here's the reality. The designer view committee uh is a committee that makes recommendations on design. They actually don't offer land use entitlement. The planning commission does that. The city council does that. But I think in some cases where projects don't go to the planning commission, they don't go to the city council, but they go to the DRC for an action. It has been interpreted by the applicants that that is a project approval and it stays with that project stays with land. This clarification um would basically give an expiration date to a design review committee approval. And that expiration date we're suggesting is a year, twelve months, unless they've actually moved forward and applied for a construction permit and that they've kept that construction permit active or that they've actually built the project. Uh they could apply for an extension, even two extensions that could be approved by the director. Uh or even additional extensions to go to the design review committee. But this would help the city in cases where a project gets endorsed by DRC. They haven't built it for a couple of years, then the zoning changes and we no longer allow that land use. And I can give you a couple of examples where that's happened. And um we no longer have a desire for that particular project to be in that location because things have changed. We have different uh transportation needs, for example. So the need for an expiration and end to that, the designer view committee approval is there. Now, something we could add is conditions of approval, but it's much more logical to have um within the code. And in this case, we would have to have findings that would be made if they wanted to have an extension, which are that there's no change plan or zoning, uh no changes to the character of the site or surroundings. All right, coming to the end, only a couple more here to go. Corner lot clarification. Want to talk about this one, Mariah?
Sure. So right now in our code, um basically for people that are located on a corner lot, they have to, of course, with the setback standards, but our code specifically says whichever side has the shorter frontage has to be considered the front and the other side would be the other side. The front setback is a little bit larger than the other corner side. Um and that doesn't necessarily work for every property. Sometimes it just doesn't even really make sense. So and we're just um proposing to take that out that defines that um that shorter side as the front and leave it up to the applicant um to choose which side is which as far as their front corner setbacks.
Great. All right. Next one, side and rear setback exceptions. This is an interesting one. Yeah, go ahead.
No, so this is another one. Um our code allows for buildings that are less than twelve feet tall to be as close as three feet to a prop- to a side or rear property line. But we were made aware by our building official that this actually conflicts with the building code. The building code requires these structures to be at least five feet from the property line. Um so we want to make this amendment just to change that three feet to five feet, which I think if you go to the next slide, Phil, maybe. Um so in the resolution that you have, we actually completely crossed out this whole section, but it does seem appropriate for these smaller buildings. Um even when you buy a shed from Home Depot, it's supposed to comply with the setback standards. So um instead of completely taking out this uh this rule for these smaller buildings, we want to just change it from that three to five feet.
Ground floor uses in the downtown commercial zoning district. And this is one that's actually just a fix in our zone, in our code text because it's just not clear. We made this amendment several years ago when the city wanted to prohibit the proliferation of office uses instead of the retail and response uses. Part of the language though unfortunately got adopted where it wasn't clear on what was supposed to happen south of the Tascadero Creek. Well, this amendment that was done several years ago really focused on East Mall, West Mall around the park and in trotta and trafficway and portions of um Palma Avenue and a portion of Alcume Real. It wasn't intended to be a restriction on the properties further down Alcume Real where today we have Jamba Juice and today we have uh Silver Bank there and then we have Colony Square. We were intending to have more flexibility on those properties, so you could still get medical offices and other things over there. So that provision about not allowing office floor uses was only supposed to apply north of the Tascadero Creek, whereas office uses were supposed to be allowed south of the creek. And the code was unclear about that distinction. So this amendment would uh add that distinction and uh only require conditional use permits in that further level of review north of the creek. Public zones table. Um just a a quick correction. The table is currently located in two places in the code. Simple adjustment to the table. Again, it's still something we have to acknowledge, uh even though it's not a significant implication. Hotels and motels. This is a good one. This has come up a lot recently where uh we've had a lot of motels uh sort of oversee their stay times. This is significant because where hotels and motels are developed in the city, these are commercial tourist zoning districts. And these are typically districts that don't allow for apartments, don't allow for for long-term residential. And we need to make sure it's very clear in our code that hotels and motels are land use that are provided for transient lodging with the intent of serving visitors that stay for less than thirty days. That's a big deal because the state has laws that say that if visitors stay for more than thirty days in a hotel, they don't have to pay the transient occupancy tax. And that is completely inconsistent with the intent of the hotel. It's typically not an allowed use to have an apartment project in a commercial zone. So this would prevent that uh transition from some hotels to be turned into a residential apartment. This clarifies that. Like the code right now does not currently specifically define the length of stay in our language definition. This update would clarify length of stay of less than thirty days for hotels and motels. Anyway, that brings us to the end. It's the last one. Um what we have found is that all these amendments are consistent with the general plan programs and our recently adopted housing elements are also consistent with our existing general plan land use settlement. The city council has had a um a cursory look at these amendments and suggested we bring the full code text language of these amendments to the planning commission. The planning commission can take action tonight to um uh let's go to the alternatives here. That we can make modifications tonight uh as a recommendation to the city council. You might want to continue this discussion. But your action tonight, if you take action on this, would be a recommendation to the city council. And we do plan on bringing this to the city council um at a future hearing in later May. So pretty quickly, if you're able to take an action on this tonight. Um but with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Uh just questions and clarifications to settle my mind, please. The discussion about accessory units, how does that apply to ADUs?
It does not. So an ADU is a completely separate animal for the most part.
Low accessory.
So these detached accessory structures are only um they're unconditioned structures by our definition. So we have a couple of different classifications. There's uh an ADU, there's a studio, which is a conditioned space that has a maximum size of four hundred fifty square feet. And then there's these um these other detached accessory structures that can be larger than that four hundred fifty square feet. So usually these are garages.
Yeah.
Yeah, workshops, barns. People also want to start store their RVs in, things like that.
Okay. Um on the fencing discussion you had, um you noted that the space between the walls was horizontal. Why not allowing there to be a surcharge between two walls? Surcharge would be a slope. There there are standards in the building code that says that the footing uh has to be a certain distance away from the the slope or the ground. Um and so uh actually having walls that uh would allow for surcharge between them versus five flat feet. The walls would actually be farther apart because of this footing requirement that's in the building code. So is there a specific reason why horizontal, it's limited to just horizontal?
No, I think what we were saying is we'd like to design that area for landscape space. If it had some slope to it, I don't think we're restricting slope. Uh we said the word horizontal, but the intent wasn't to have it dead flat. If it had to have slope for surcharge uh and engineering standard, that's fine. What we're trying to say is five-foot distance, whether that's five-foot distance and there's some slope.
So
we had an intent to prevent slope.
It there could be a two-to-one slope between walls?
If that is acceptable in terms of engineering those walls and can accommodate some landscape, it's a pretty steep slope. But that, yeah, the intent here is not to restrict slope in between those areas, but is to space out the wall areas so you don't end up with one massive expanse or span of wall. Um and then you get less of a solar impact on adjacent properties and you get less of a visual impact. It's all about visual shade impact and aesthetics and architecture. So thinking about it in that particular way, if there's a slope, I think you could achieve the same, I should the same goals.
Okay. Um discussion about stuff. Uh does stuff include commercial vehicles parked within residential areas?
No. So a vehicle is is defined separately in our code. And there is a limit to vehicles on properties, especially if they're um inoperative. Um and there's a limit to that. Uh so this is different. This is just stuff. This is just, hey, I've got, you know, ten broken uh dishwashers and I've got, you know, five fenders off a car and I've got, you know, twenty-five barrels of stuff and I've got this stuff. I mean, like in a, like in this image, you know, you just see stuff. And sometimes, you know, if someone has an organized collection of things, that's different. That's not junk. What we're talking about is truly trash.
Yeah, there was the gentleman next to San Gabriel School who now has a six-foot fence up. Um there's it also the uh so we're saying we can have stuff up to a thousand square feet if it's screened. I I can't, I don't know how much a C train holds, but could I park five C trains on my property that cover no more than a thousand square feet? Um like stuff is inside the C train.
Well, you can build a structure. If you get permits for a C train, you can do it.
So C trains are actually, um they're kind of their own thing where you have to get a special permit that you have to be on at least an acre and then it has to go to the design review committee if you want one. And if you want more than one, it actually has to go to planning commission. So
Less than a thousand square feet of storage within, I mean, up to a thousand.
C train, a C train is probably not a good example, but if you, let's say you build two large sheds. Uh and you got a construction permit for them, you can do whatever you want in that first scenario, but or if you got, you know, two small sheds that didn't require a permit. Um or less than one twenty, it's still, it's still not a number thousand. So C trains aren't, are, yeah, they're a whole separate thing. So it's hard to compare.
And uh people are using them more and more to store things. So I'm wondering, so it, the C train does not follow fall within the zoning code amendment that you were discussing previously.
Absolutely not. Now it's a whole different animal.
Yeah, our code specifically calls out the regulations for C trains. Um so they're totally
No, sorry about that. Uh covered parking. Um ADUs require park covered parking where, like you said, residential homes do not. Um has there been any change to that particular zoning code standard?
Well, not ADUs. We're only talking about multi-family apartments here, really.
I understand, but secondary secondary homes had to have a covered parking spot, whereas your residential, single family did not have to have a covered spot. Which I always saw was kind of crazy. So I'm asking if the uh is there, it has there been a change made, like let's say for ADUs then?
The state has superseded this at this time for ADUs and there's a whole number of different parking provisions for those that have been taken away.
Yeah.
And so um that's a whole different, again, a whole different discussion. In fact, we'll be coming back to the commission sometime this year with a whole ADU policy that responds to the current state laws and talks about parking all of those issues separately. So this does not accommodate ADUs whatsoever. This is only a distinction between multi-family residential apartments and single-family homes.
Uh expiration dates on DRC approvals. Um so if I pull a permit and I start work on the structure, does that auto- automatically give me a time extension on the DRC approval?
Absolutely, forever. Yeah.
Took my time building. It could last three years.
Well, as long as you keep that permit open uh and you keep inspections moving and you're in compliance with the building code, yes.
How does zero lot lines um with respect to the setback standards that were discussed? I mean, in the building code, the reason why there's a five-foot setback is because it's based on a fire code.
Yep.
You have a one-hour wall has to be with, it can't be closer than five feet. Uh whereas zero lot lines, you would have a two-hour wall. Could you be within that five feet that's in the zoning code?
Well, that wasn't taken into consideration when we made this change. The reality is you can build zero lot line development that's consistent with the building code when it is fire-rated with two-hour construction. That means no windows, no openings. Uh so you're right. And that is something that we could consider as a change here at the last minute. That's an interesting stipulation you brought up. change here at the last minute. That's an interesting stipulation you brought up.
It seems like you, obviously to do a zero lot line, you have to have a use permit to do, get to, to get the building on the zero lot line. Would that, would the use permit itself then maybe cover that discussion?
It could, or the item three, it's already in the code here that we've written on this as a last minute change could cover that.
I just bringing it up for clarification with me, and if it does trigger something, then great. My last question, the hotels and motels, there are, I, I'm not going to say a lot of people, but there are a lot of the hotels, let's say of the motel six is rented for certain peoples, for indigenous people, for people that have been, have gone through family issues. Sometimes people have been into the hospitals who can't, can't go home for certain reasons. Then what we're saying, for whatever reason, if they have to stay there more than thirty days, they have to move out to move back in.
What we're saying is that when we approve as a city, a hotel or motel, we want it to be a hotel or motel. We don't want it to be an apartment. If we approve an apartment, we, we expect it to be an apartment. We approve a hotel or motel, we expect it to be for transient lodging for less than thirty days. So if somebody owns a motel, motel six, and they want to change that characteristic, we want them to come to the city to get that approved as a different lane use. Rather than just automatically disobey our particular stipulations on that property. So, yeah, there may be circumstances when a certain motel might cater to a certain clientele. But that's not consistent with what our general plan, I mean, just code expects for that property.
So with the code change, would the city go chase the owners of motel six and say, how many people in here have been residing here for the last two years?
We are doing that now without this code change. This code change helps us go further down this path. We're probably not going to go after anybody proactively. But if we have a significant violation in a new hotel, for example, the Hilton Home to Suites, where the hotel comes to us and says, hey, we've got a certain number of our units that we're going to be renting out long-term this year. We need to be able to say, well, no, actually we approved you as a hotel and the definition of a hotel is very clear that we do not allow stays for greater than thirty days. And you must therefore pay your transient occupancy tax.
So if they did pay transient, I mean, could they mitigate long-term stay by saying, okay, we'll pay, pay transient occupancy tax? Would that allow for them to, let's say, get a waiver to allow for people to stay there longer than thirty days?
Possibly. I don't think we're making that distinction with this code change, but that's an interesting discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions of staff?
I had two things. Yeah, well, I guess since we're already on it and that number fifteen, so correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, but this is about the ability to receive tax, right, on the hotel and motel?
It's not a hundred percent about receiving tax. It's really also.
That's the common.
It's a portion of it. The reality is if someone comes to the city and says, hey, I'm going to build a small hotel or motel here, or a large one for that matter. We set up all of our provisions in terms of what we expect for architecture and for the way the building is designed and where the building is sited and how we do the parking and how we do everything for a visitor stay. We don't set that up for an apartment. Apartments have very different requirements in the terms of their quality and that they have outdoor open space and that there's amenities for children, there's yard space and that there's kitchens. Hotels and motels have none of those things. They're designed for overnight stays for well under thirty days. And so we would view a apartment project very differently with what hotel and motel for many reasons, not just the tax.
So it's like standard of living too.
Yes, exactly. And so the Hilton, the Hilton Home to Suites, if it was designed as an apartment building, would be a very different thing. It wouldn't be that form whatsoever. So this is, this is about quality of life. This is about city quality and neighborhood quality. Transient occupancy, occupancy tax is a little piece of that whole thing, but it's really about being realistic to what land uses are. If we're going to classify someone as a hotel or motel, we want it to be that. If we're going to classify them as an apartment, we want it to be that. They're designed very differently.
Can I be, can I be devil's advocate, please? So this past year, we've been through the pandemic and there have been a lot of people who have home, own hotels and motels who haven't had the, the traffic that they normally get because travel has been prohibited. Would there be any leniency under those circumstances for the well-being and the quality of life for the property owner and the building owner and the manager, the owner of the, of the motel to be able to rent out those spaces? Because no one's been coming here overnight to stay for a couple of days. Is there any type, it seems to me with the, the law, I mean, always says that there should be exceptions. Are there, to all these changes, are there exceptions that can be applied for? Some of them already had exceptions.
I think, I mean, with this, with the number fifteen here, we are currently offering some leniency to some hotels and motels. Obviously during COVID and we're not regulating this very tightly, but we want the ability that if we need to, if a hotel converts into a residential product that wasn't approved there, we need the ability to be able to enforce our code.
Yeah.
Helps us in that endeavor.
Okay.
Are you just taking questions at this time or comments to related to all fifteen?
I think we're still on questions right now. I think.
Okay. Well, my other question then, I'll go back to comments on fifteen later because I definitely have a lot. But number five, what would, my question would, would be what would be the fine or repercussion for not being compliant with the junk thing?
Oh, it's a code enforcement letter. So basically, when we come out to a property, we see a violation and we don't go out to a property looking for violations. By the way, we are reactive. So we get a call, we go out to a property, our first time we go out, it's a conversation. Hey, by the way, you know, we've got a complaint. We really need you to try and comply with the code because we have a problem. And so we tell them why and we have a really cordial conversation. Then we re-inspect thirty days later. If there's not compliance, we will send a letter. And then we will usually send another letter after another thirty days. We do not go out and give someone a fine right off the bat. It's a conversation. It's a letter. If there's non-compliance after a prolonged period of time, then the city does have the ability to place a fine. That fine is very small.
Yeah, okay. And then just my last question was around number nine, the gate thing. Cause I already have that situation happening in my neighborhood on Graves Creek. And so the, how will the public, if anything, it all is going to be done, be looped in on this change? Cause I can see that, I didn't mean, I'm not necessarily having a a crystal ball here, but I, I could see that this, if that change was amended, most of our residents won't really know that that's been a change. And so they're going to build their gate right up against the, the road and then it'd just be a huge safety issue like it already is. So I'm just like, well, could we, could we do public outreach about that at all? Where would it get paper clipped to not spend more money on outreach for that? But yeah.
Most of the time we see, we see them come in with a new house project or a new development project. So we do get a chance to talk to people and regulate. Yeah, there are cases when people build fences out of compliance, they build gates out of compliance because they don't know. Challenge, that's a really good, that's a really good question. We, we do try and get the word out when we do any of these changes by using all of our social media sources and all of our other avenues for doing that. This one, most of the time, people actually do come and ask us about fences and gates. They, they want to inquire before they make an investment on their property, especially when it has to do with their property right at the screen. It just comes up a lot as a question. So that's where we would hope to get the most input. But yeah, it's a challenge to get the word out on so many things and to get people to listen. So I think it's a really good point you brought it up.
Okay, thanks.
Randy.
I just, I just wanted to go back on the hotel with the thirty day limit. I mean, so my employment ever down, then will send me down to LA for sometimes six to eight weeks for training. And I mean, you almost live out of a hotel, but it says something transitional. Do you know if we have anything, like any heart of industry where that's, that could be created here? Cause if so, I just would hate to have like, uh, cause we do have some industries who are more ag-based. I just was wondering if that ever happens. Is there any way to make a notice or is there any workability?
I think like I mentioned earlier, there is flexibility on this and hotels do oftentimes reserve a very small percentage of their rooms for these longer-term stays. And at that level, it's okay and the city is okay with that. We just don't want the larger portion of rooms to convert over to a long-term residential stay and apartment project. We understand there needs to be flexibility in this situation. We also need to understand the city needs to have a way to say, hey, there's a limit. This is a hotel. This is a motel. We need to preserve it for that use. It changes the extreme nature of a hotel motel when it becomes predominantly long-term apartment use. It'll change the entire feeling of that site. And then it takes it out of the ability to be used for tourism and for visitors as it changes that nature. So we just don't, we want to get away from that, but understanding that there's a way to provide some flexibility.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I get where you're coming from there. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I was just curious about the, do we have any kind of idea what the cost impact would be of making the retaining walls broken up like that? Is there like a big cost difference? This is total curiosity. I, I'm not, I don't build retaining walls, so I don't have any idea. Like, is there a big difference between building a bunch of little ones or a big, a big one?
Sure, there is going to be additional cost for doing that.
Okay.
Not only is there additional cost, but you're using additional land. Now, it's pretty rare that we come up with a scenario where you've got a twelve or fourteen foot wall. Someone's doing that, the cost of doing that wall is significant anyway. And the architectural impacts of that are significant. So we're already by this particular proposed amendment, we're saying, hey, eight feet's okay. Eight feet's pretty tall. So yeah, there is additional cost by breaking it up and there's additional loss of land by breaking it up. Definitely.
But I, I agree, I think for the architectural, from the architectural point of view, this is much, much nicer. You can put, you can break it up with the landscape. I was just, I was just curious.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, we'll open this up to a public hearing and allow the, any participants, anybody in the public that would like to comment on this, if you would, please raise your hand. Or attendees, you can raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, you could do star nine.
I'm shocked we still have people watching.
It looks like the, the interest has dropped off dramatically for some reason.
Shocking.
Because this is my favorite topic.
You know what? I, I would really, it's very, very interesting. It's just that it's ten o'clock at night. And so I don't look quite as enthusiastic as I actually feel about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, like, do we want to revisit making real recommendations or comments to our council until the next one? Not because I want to continue things, but it just seems like we might not be giving it our best. I mean, we're all here. Can we just like?
We're just going to move.
Pause. Okay.
We're, we're going to move it forward.
Okay.
I see no comments, so we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to bring it back. Does anybody have, uh, would like to make a motion on this issue?
Yeah, make the motion.
Yeah.
And I just want to clarify, um, does that motion include that revision to not eliminate that whole setback section, but just change that three feet to five feet for the side and rear? Okay.
I second the motion.
Dennis, second.
I just want a discussion on number fifteen, that I'm having an issue with it. Yeah, and that's why I'm like, there's no room to really talk because we're all pretty tired in my.
And the issue, again, go over your issues.
What is your, what is your issue, Victoria?
Yeah, what is Victoria's issue? Um, well, it's, it's, you know, I get the whole ability to receive the tax piece. I just, the quality of life thing seems, while well-intended, we have a housing crisis and, and a, and an issue of whether a hotel is suitable for somebody when they might be on the street. I, I just, I can't buy it. So I'm just having a hard time thinking that this is to help people that might otherwise not be in a sheltered area that's safe at all. So anyway.
Just to interject on that, the state already defines hotels as transient occupancy places and they, or they already have the thirty day cutoff. So once a guest stays more than thirty days, they're considered a resident and then they have all rights of residential residence in terms of eviction or using that address as their resident. So, so I think the discussion at this point is if you didn't want to adopt that, it's still the state law. We're just not clarifying it in our code and you need to look at then allowing high, you know, high-density residential uses maybe in that zone. Because a hotel use is not, is not a residence.
Kind of unwinds to become problematic. The additional thing too, is we don't allow very many units in a hotel to have kitchens or kitchenettes and then we have a restriction on that. What is it? How many units per?
Only ten percent. I will also say that the state required us to allow single-room occupancy units in certain zones. And I believe that is in our commercial zone, so that would be a legalized residential hotel. So a hotel could potentially go through the process to change use to a single-room occupancy. And those are clearly defined by the state and there is a process to legally convert that if they wanted to make that a choice and an option in our code today.
And, and I think also hearing from Phil, I, I, to me, there seemed like there was some, again, an exception to the rule that, that it's not emphatic that every room has to be like this. And so I think if an owner is willing to approach the city and say, hey, I want to do this with ten rooms in my sixty-room hotel, can I? And I do believe that there's a process for that to, to occur.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it, it could be reactionary because you have someone that's been more or less just like overstaying their welcome and then they have that ability to, like Kelly said, evict or not. But, okay, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of getting where it's going.
It's kind of like a parking a boat on the street or an RV on the street. It can be there three days and then person who parks there for three days moves it up twenty.
Move to twenty and not three. Yeah.
Then they move it back to twenty feet three days later. Same thing is kind of here. I mean, technically someone can move out for one day and move back in.
I saw a couple of hands, Randy.
Oh, I was just going to say, can we request a motion to vote on this?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. Uh, can I get a roll call, please, on this?
Yes. Can you all hear me? Okay. Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Carranza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson King?
Yes.
Chairperson Vanda Nikoff?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. And Victoria, you can certainly go to the city council meeting and, in public comment, make your comments.
Sure. Thank you.
Right. Thankfully, that was all of our public hearing items. Director, do you have any, director's report?
I will tell you real briefly that we do have a hearing scheduled for May eighteenth. I will tell you real briefly that we do have a hearing scheduled for May eighteenth. Uh, we're trying to pull that together. I am going to say that it's probably going to be a lot easier, uh, for you than tonight. Tonight was a challenge and you've again had some challenges here. Uh, but it looks like we are poised to look at a couple of accessory structures that are oversized. Similar to one of the topics in this zoning amendment. So, um, that's the eighteenth, six PM. Uh, we're going to keep that one brief. You guys have done your time for volunteering for the community. And, um, everyone appreciates that. So I, I'm just going to say have a great evening and, uh, yeah, great job.
Thank you. Well, with that, we will be adjourned until May eighteenth.
Thank you all very much. Russ, well, yes.
Good night.
Good night.